I'm going to resume the meeting. We previously opened the meeting at 6:30 PM, an executive session. It's meeting in the authority school department. It is now seven something, 7:12 PM. First item on the agenda is the public input. Does anybody in the audience that would like to be heard, please raise your hand to be recognized? I don't see anybody. Yeah? Next is the student report. We've got Zachary Mullin Bernstein, the class of 2015. Zach's obviously a senior. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. So, last week, the high school student council attended the Northeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Council's conference. At the conference, Gabriela Zara was awarded the James Rokas Award, and she also worked with Dan Madden to present a workshop on thinking outside of the box. Also at the conference, Jordan Shilly was awarded the Unsung Hero Award, and the high school achieved gold council status. Last Thursday, the high school also had a successful lockdown drill and a K-9 search of the school. This week and next, the junior class will be selling tickets for the junior prom, which will be held two weeks from Friday. MCAS testing will start tomorrow for sophomore students and will continue until Thursday. Next Monday, the Future Business Leaders of America Club will be traveling to Bentley University for their annual state conference. And next Tuesday, the American Red Cross Club will be having their second blood drive at the high school from 9 to 1, and any members of the community are encouraged to come to the school gymnasium to donate. Spring sports started up last week, and boys tennis will have their first match next week, but most other sports will have to wait until early April because of the snow still on most of the fields. For my student report, I brought in a project I'm working on currently for my AP-US Gov. class, and it's a mock senate committee hearing project. So, 15 of us were assigned to be specific senators, and I'm a senator, and then nine of us were chosen to be witnesses, and they range from companies like the Ford Motor Group to environmental agencies like the Sierra Club. And the topic we're discussing is the Clean Air Act, and specifically cap and trade and target carbon regulations. So, for the last two days in class, we've been using the laptops and we've been using the Chromebooks to research about exactly what our person believes about the topic. And we've had to put together a one pair, like a one to two-minute summary of our ideas, and then the senators have had to come up with questions that we would ask the different witnesses on Wednesday in class, and we'll have a discussion then. This is the rubric for the project and my person's ideas and the questions I'll ask the people.
Thank you, Zach.
And that's just a copy.
Well, the good thing about not having tennis courts this year is you wouldn't be able to use them anyway, just like every other sport, you'd be inside anyhow. So, that's good. Any comments or questions for Zach?
You made your call as far as yet?
No, not yet. Still waiting on a couple. Yeah.
You probably have at least one more appearance with the school committee, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And then I think the seniors usually come all together.
That's right, correct. So, anything else for Zach?
All right, Zach, thank you very much. Excellent job, and good luck in tennis.
I wish the dead course was like that when I was in school.
Okay, next on the agenda, it's continued business, and we have an updated report on the secondary school building project. I asked the superintendent to report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just a few things to note. I'm happy to say that the roof installation on the middle school project is, was completed on March 19th. There's some, still some detail work to take place, but at this point, the building is weather tight, and because of that, the contractors are able to move a little bit more efficiently on some of the interior work that, that needs to be done. Finished painting has begun in the two-story portion of Building E. The installation of mechanical systems continues throughout the one-story E and F buildings. The exterior brickwork is nearing completion in select unfinished areas on the one and two-story structure. Framing and sheet rocking of walls is ongoing in the one-story portion of Building E, and connections for the ductwork and electrical systems to the rooftop equipment that had been set just about two weeks ago is, is taking place presently. I'm going, I'm going on my first tour in quite a while of the middle school tomorrow, so I'm very anxious to see, Mr. Bowers has kept me up to date, and he says that the progress has been remarkable as of late, so I'm very anxious to see it myself tomorrow. So, hopefully, all good things to report and remains on schedule. There's a very nice article in the paper on Thursday that, that made it very clear that the, that the project remains on schedule, so that's good news.
I just want to remind everybody that the secondary school building committee meetings, open meetings, we have them on Tuesday and every other Tuesday. Tomorrow night, we'll have a meeting at 5:30 in this room. So, anybody that wants to come is welcome to, to show up, and as John said, as of right now, we are on schedule. So, any other comments from Cliff, from the committee members, Mel, Janine?
I just want to say that Jerry and I had a chance to visit the Wilmington High, new Wilmington High School last week, Thursday. There were thousands of people pouring in through there. Very nice building, a couple of nice things that I'm going to ask, I'd like to ask our architect tomorrow to see if there are some things we might be able to do here. And as I said, very nice building there, but I'm also very happy with the project we have here. This is a, their building was great. This is a first-class facility we have here right now. Very pleased with what we have.
And at this time, I would ask you not to repeat that to our project manager, contractor, or architect.
No, we will stay on top of them to get the, in fact, Jerry and I are so conditioned to walking through a building and writing down things for a punch list. I had my phone out, and Jerry's taking notes.
We were doing a punch list for Wilmington.
Right, and then we realized we really don't have to be doing that since it's not our school, so we don't have to worry about it. But it's a nice building and some interesting design.
Yeah, and they did a great job getting done on time. They had to make them move during the February vacation, which is quite a challenge, and they were able to do that. They were pretty well settled in there, I'll tell you, and, but they've gone through some of the same pains that we have with parking and with scheduling and things like that, so it's, it's a very nice facility.
They started the day, I believe the day they moved into the new building, they started the abatement process to tear down the old.
In fact, they were starting the demolition, what day were they?
Thursday.
Thursday. They're supposed to start the demolition, I think, today.
Yeah.
So, the entire old building is coming down. Okay. Anything further? No? Next on the agenda is policy manual review. We have second reading for the policy regarding background checks and quarter requirements. There were some changes that were made. I think this is a pretty standard operating policy, though. We have both the policy, which is GAM in our policy book, as well as the regulations assigned, attached to this policy, which are GAMR. So, at this time, I'd ask for a motion, preferably from somebody from the policy subcommittee, to approve in second reading this particular GAM policy.
Move to approve second reading, the policy GAM and the regulations to go with it, background checks, and quarter requirements.
Motion by Cliff and a second by Janine. Any further comments or questions regarding the policy? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of four to nothing.
Janine, a question. There was another policy that we had sent back to review, domestic review's leave policy, because there was a question about it being paid or not being paid. Do we have?
Policy subcommittee has not met since the last meeting. We are meeting April 2nd?
2nd.
2nd, April 2nd.
Thank you.
Okay, and a good job again to the policy subcommittee. It's tedious work sometimes, a lot of, a lot of language in these policies, and guys did a great job. Next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's report on his entry plan and his findings from the entry plan. John's been superintendent since October 18th, John?
Yes.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you.
So, Jerry, I don't know if you want to move on the other side.
You can do it with your.
So, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to once again speak about my entry plan. As Mr. Venezia said, I became the superintendent on October 18th. A little bit maybe interesting maybe for some, than some other folks to assume the superintendency from out of the district, where I have been working in the district. I actually began some of my work on the entry plan in the overlap while I was the high school principal. And at the outset, I want to, I want to thank the many people who gave their time to sit with me and to answer my, sometimes I'm sure tedious questions, to help gain a greater insight into the school district. So, what I have for you tonight, as well as the full report that I gave to you in your packet, is just an overview of some of the highlights of what I learned over the last few months since becoming the superintendent. You might recall that just about a couple of months ago, I presented with you, to you at that time, about a five-page timeline of the steps that I was going to undertake as part of the entry plan, and I'd just like to review some of that now. So, just to kind of review for you, what was the overarching, what were the overarching goals of the entry plan, and what did I hope to gain from the experience? It was an opportunity for me to gain a deeper insight into the school district across all grade levels during a concise period of time. So, while my 11-plus years had been at the high school, as the high school principal, and I had, I would like to think great familiarity with the town and with the district, I still found that there was an awful lot for me to learn from both the elementary and the middle school levels, and, and also from the high school and some community knowledge that I hoped to gain. The entry plan process did allow for me to achieve that. I also hoped to examine further the key issues in the school system's past in order to make sense of how such issues have been handled, and to identify the norms and how they would affect the organization's functioning in the future. I also hoped to identify and prioritize the tasks which need to be done. That was probably the most important thing for me, is, is what did we need to do as an action plan going forward as a school district? And then finally, to establish how these tasks should be accomplished. The steps that I undertook to complete the entry plan were to engage in conversations with constituents, and a little bit later in the presentation tonight, I'll share with you, the folks that I did have an opportunity to sit with, was to gather data through these interviews and also surveys. I conducted a survey with all faculty and staff and with parents across the district in late December and early January. I spent a great deal of time in schools and in classrooms. I reviewed a number of key documents. Again, there's a listing of those as part of the PowerPoint presentation tonight. I'll share with that, that with you a little bit later. I ultimately then needed to organize the information collected, and that was a very arduous task, and it resulted in about a 38-page report that I shared with all of you prior to this evening. And then now I'm at the step of where I'm sharing and analyzing the information collected with district and school leaders, and ultimately, that led to the development of the report of entry plan findings as a completed document. So, the interviews that I, that I, this is a listing of those folks that I had an opportunity to sit with and have extended conversation. I'm going to just highlight a few of the, the key groups that I met with, certainly all the members of the administrative council, various faculty and staff, a number of students across all grade levels, parents and guardians. I met with the parent advisory council for the superintendent, the North Reading Education Association president, the president of our special education parent advisory council, school committee members, the chairman of the board of selectmen, our state representative, Brad Jones, the youth services director, our town administrator, the chairman of our finance committee, and the chiefs of both the fire and police department. This was extensive. It took an awful lot of time, but it was well worth the effort. I reviewed all of the school improvement plans for the five schools, a number of school committee meeting agendas and minutes, all of the district, the school websites and the district website, previous small and large capital improvement plans, collective bargaining agreements, enrollment and demographic projections and trends, key indicators of student learning, so I renewed trends in MCAS, AP exams, ACT, SAT, our graduation rates, educator evaluation documents, curriculum guides, school handbooks, program of studies, the annual town reports, our emergency crisis management plans, professional development plans, administrator and staff evaluations, special education procedures manual, financial reviews and audits, our school's strategic plan, NRPS 2016, the district curriculum accommodation plan, and the NEASC accreditation report that was issued for the high school. Once I had all of that information reviewed and gathered, I then needed to kind of take a, take a good, close look at it and kind of make some sense of it. And what I did was I, I kind of centered on four key areas: governance and leadership, academics, parent and community relations, and finance and budget operations. And then what I did was I organized the report into a narrative section where I would take all of the information that I had gotten from the various conversations that I had and developed a narrative overview in each of those four major areas. I then took the opportunity to identify both major findings and what I called opportunities for inquiry and growth. I shared the information with district and school leaders at the administrative council level particularly, and now here with the school committee. The next steps are going to be to identify patterns, trends, and themes, and then to plan for future growth. Take all of the information that I gathered, what are we now going to do with that? And the idea is that we would then advance the school district. So, I took an opportunity for tonight just to kind of pull from, from the many major key findings and opportunities for inquiry and growth, and just to highlight a number that I thought were particularly important, and also which really centered on kind of some theme issues throughout the, the interviews that I had with folks and the documents that I reviewed. So, these are some of the key findings that I, that I determined. School and municipal leaders are highly engaged and collaborative. Educators and support staff care deeply about their work. The school district's strategic plan, NRPS 2016, A Strategy for the Future, is a very valuable document. The construction of a new high school and middle school is a great source of pride and reflects the community's strong commitment to education. Programs for students with special needs support access to a full curriculum. Assessing the social, emotional needs of students is essential. Students are polite, engaged, caring, well-rounded, and dedicated to their education. The educational program at all levels is described as being rigorous and contemporary. Parents are actively engaged and appropriately engaged in their child's education. There are many strong community partnerships. School, district, home communication is favorable. Financial operational resource availability can be challenging. The annual budget process is collaborative, participatory, and transparent. Fees assessed to families are viewed unfavorably, yet essential. And parents' associations and other booster organizations provide generous supplemental support to the district and school budgets. Again, a number of the key major findings, certainly not all of them. And by the way, the full text of my report will be posted on the district's website. I did not do that because I wanted to share it in this venue first. Some key opportunities for inquiry and growth, some areas that I thought are going to need some, some greater attention from either me as the superintendent or working with others to achieve. I think it's important that we work collaboratively with the town's safety and emergency services personnel to advance school safety protocols. The hiring of a permanent director of pupil personnel services is essential. Professional development to effectively meet state and federal mandates is critical. The need to acquire additional teachers to maintain more reasonable class sizes, particularly at the high school level, was identified as a high priority. The hiring of a digital learning coordinator also identified as a high priority, and also to examine and address the need of the vertical alignment of curriculum. I learned from folks that there was a need to identify, excuse me, to enhance the district and school websites to make them better resources for students, parents, and community members. A need to strengthen the analysis of student performance data on standardized assessments to achieve consistent growth. The continued funding for district-wide technology initiatives and long-range capital planning is a priority. To explore opportunities for school and municipal shared services. Restore schools and district expense budgets to a level that meets the identified needs. To meet the strategic objectives outlined in NRPS 2016, A Strategy for the Future, with its three strategic objectives of teaching and learning, student support services, and technology integration. In the surveys that I developed for both parents and for faculty and staff, there were, there was a combination of the types of questions that I asked some, the people that responded. Some were opportunities to provide narrative comments, and others were to, on a kind of a Likert scale, just rate their level of satisfaction from either extremely satisfied down to not very satisfied at all. And so, what is represented on the next four slides, two, two slides with data points from the parent survey and two slides from the survey for faculty and staff, are the percentage response of extremely satisfied and satisfied for all of the questions that were asked. So, I do think, if I could, you know, in order to just kind of move it on and not be too redundant, the data point center on level of satisfaction is either extremely satisfied or fairly satisfied. So, that's the same for all. So, I'll just kind of hit the, the percentage data point and what, what the question centered on. So, 91%, 91.8% of respondents indicated their level of satisfaction with communication that they received from the school district was either extremely satisfied or fairly satisfied. 94.4% of respondents indicated a high level of satisfaction with the strength and rigor of the academic program. Again, these are parent statistics. 85% of respondents indicated their level of satisfaction with the social opportunities for students within and sponsored by the school department. 86.5% of respondents indicated a high level of satisfaction with the co-curricular opportunities for students. Again, 86.5%. 83% of parents responded that they were either extremely satisfied or fairly satisfied with the availability of educational resources. Similarly, 83% again indicated a high level of satisfaction with the student-teacher ratios in classes that their children attended. 88.5% of respondents, parent respondents, indicated a high level of satisfaction with their, with the school department's efforts to include all students, all students in all aspects of school life. And 97% of respondents indicated that there is a high or moderate degree of effort to uphold the vision and mission of the school district, both of which are printed on the cover to the full entry plan report. The faculty and staff survey had, I think, I think the parent survey had nine questions, and the faculty and staff survey had 12 questions of this type. Again, very similar questions. The numbers do vary a little bit from the level of satisfaction from faculty and staff versus parents. 99% of respondents indicated a high level of, satisfactory, high degree of satisfaction with the level of communication coming from the superintendent or the superintendent's office. I credit Ann Lundell with all of the success in that one. 95.6% of respondents indicated, indicated a high level of satisfaction with the strength and rigor of the academic program. 96.7% of faculty and staff indicated a high level of satisfaction with the social opportunities for students within and sponsored by the school department. 97.8% a high level of satisfaction with the co-curricular opportunities for students. 72.2% of faculty and staff indicated that they were either extremely satisfied or fairly satisfied with the availability of educational resources. 60.7% of the faculty and staff indicated that they are either extremely satisfied or fairly satisfied with student-teacher ratios. 87.6% indicated their level of satisfaction as either extremely high or fairly, excuse me, extremely satisfied or fairly satisfied with the efforts to include all students in all aspects of school life. 63.3% of faculty and staff indicated they were either extremely or fairly satisfied with the professional support for all employees. 45.6% of respondents indicated that they are either extremely satisfied or satisfied with professional development opportunities for employees. 86.7% indicated either extremely satisfied or fairly satisfied with the preparation of students to meet the challenges of the 21st century. 71.1% of respondents indicated they are either extremely satisfied or fairly satisfied with the district's efforts to prepare all educators to meet the demands of state and federal mandates. And lastly, 97.8% of faculty and staff indicated they are either highly satisfied, excuse me, indicate either a high degree or a moderate degree of effort to uphold the vision and mission of the school district. So, again, the, the questions that asked on the Likert scale to rank was only, they were only one portion of the overall survey. There were many questions that offered parents and faculty and staff the opportunity to make a narrative comment, and that's what, that, that portion of the information was what helped to shape the, the entry plan report in another way. So, just a quick summary for you, I guess, you know, I just, what did I gain from this whole experience? Where do I see us going in the future with it? I think it's, it was very clear to me that the North Reading Public School District is a solid, performing district of many successes and strengths. The challenges that we are being confronted with right now are, are not unlike the, the challenges that many other districts across the state are being confronted with. I want to make sure that I acknowledge my, my deep appreciation for folks who took the time to either sit and meet with me and talk with me and respond to my questions, or participate in the, in the surveys that I disseminated. And as I, as I spend more and more time in schools, and, you know, this really, quite honestly, has been really the first opportunity that I have had to spend any great, any amount of time, any significant amount of time in an elementary or a middle school, and I have enjoyed that tremendously. It has been a wonderful experience for me. I was a, a guest reader and a mystery reader in a preschool on just this past Friday, and it's, if there's any doubt that the work that we do is important, I would challenge anyone to go in and visit a preschool classroom and just see what teachers and students are doing in those things. Really, it makes, it makes the hard work all worthwhile. So, I, I continue to be extremely impressed with the level of engagement by, by all stakeholders, all stakeholders. We have wonderful advocates in this community, fantastic students, dedicated teachers and administrators and support staff. It's very, very clear to me that everyone is, is working very, very hard to create a quality educational experience for all students. While there might be work that remains to be done, it has been a wonderful learning experience for me these last several months, and I'm very deeply grateful to, to everyone who has taken the time to share their thoughts with me. So, as I conclude here today on this presentation, the next steps, where I'm at in this whole process is to, is to share the report of entry plan findings. I did vet this with the administrative council up through last week. I'm sharing it now publicly and with the school committee tonight. My, my intent is to share that more widely with the community through the district's website and an announcement that it is available. So, I will be sending out a mass email to the, to the school community tomorrow, alerting them, alerting them to the fact that it will be posted on the district website and encourage them to go in and read it and see the information that has been provided to me and how it's going to direct, I think, our work to be done over the next few years. Because NRPS 2016, and I applaud Kathy Willis, who's the prior superintendent, for the work that she did to establish that strategic plan, and I was fortunate to, to have been a part in its development as the high school principal, I think it is a document that is, is very clearly viewed very favorably and has, has served this school district well these, these last few years. I've kind of put in quotes here, is, is the next plan, NRPS 2021. I tend to think that it probably is something like that, but that's, that's to be determined as we, as we as an administrative council and as a district kind of contemplate what, what, what our next steps are going to be based on much of the information that was gathered through, through my report of entry plan findings. So, that's what I've been doing for the last few months.
Back to the committee first for questions, and then we'll open it up to the audience. Is there any, the audience, any questions? Mel?
John, when, when we reference educational resources, are we talking about books, technologies? What does that refer to?
I, I, I think it, I think people understood that to mean instructional resources, the availability of things in classrooms for them to do the good work, the good teaching and learning that needs to take place.
And that, it makes sense that we have the 72% extremely, highly sat, moderately satisfied, fairly satisfied with the staff, because we know there are issues there in terms of resources. I, you know, overall, I don't think there are any surprises here. You hit on the key issue, which is financial resources. I think we've talked for a number of years about the need to increase professional development and...
And it's reflected in the survey, obviously.
Right, exactly. And the same thing with, you know, increase expense budgets, get expense budgets back where they should be with the schools. And so, all of, by not being able to do that, we get the results that aren't really surprising from the staff, but it's going to continue to be a challenge because of budget issues. But we have, we have to, I think we have to really make an all-out effort and to see what kind of out-of-the-box thinking we might be able to come up with for professional development. And that's the area that concerns me the most. We can't have our staff fall behind and not be, you know, trained the way they need to be to meet the 21st century education requirements.
Well, it, well, it is true that that data point, and again, I think because, I think that's a fairly honest number, I really do, which leads me to think that the responses to all of the questions were, you know, people paid attention to what was being asked of them, and I think provided some honest feedback. If you, if you go into the full text of the report, you will see, however, that there are comments in the narrative that reflect very favorably on the, I would call, fairly recent work we have done with a lot more in-house professional development, utilizing our own staff. That has gotten very, very good feedback. Now, we unfortunately, this survey was done in December and January. We had a professional development day on February 6th, I think it was, Patrick. So, you know, we got very good feedback on that day, and I think that kind of thing is, we're likely to see more of that, you know, utilizing the talents of our own people. It's, it's, it's less expensive, certainly, and I think it, people can speak to the things that they know are, are issues in the, in the district that need attention because they live them themselves every day. So, that's one kind of more innovative thing that has been coming, and I think it's fair to say that we, we like it, we, as an administrative council, that would be...
I'd just also say that I think some of that is a reaction to all the mandates. We've had to take a lot of our time to, to inform folks about ed-bow, EDMs, and all this mandates, and not a lot of time for even really a lot of time for curriculum. So, it's definitely on our radar, and it's proven already.
Great, thanks. Any other comments from committee members?
A lot of work.
Yes. It was good. It was a lot of work, but I have to say, it was very, it was a very good way for me to, to learn across the district, you know, what the issues are. And my, the new superintendent's induction program, of which you all know I've been a part of, with, with Mass Association of School Superintendents, and my mentor superintendent, Chris McGrath, is here tonight, you know, that, that group... Chris McGrath, is here tonight, you know, that, that group and the support has been very valuable too because area superintendents, we're all, you know, there's Wilmington is the new superintendent this year, Linfield is, I am, Swamp's got the four of us, kind of formed a little bit of cohort to support each other and, and work through and, and it's, uh, it's been very, very interesting work. And when I make a claim on, uh, one of the later slides that, uh, we're not, we're not facing challenges unlike many other communities, it's from those kinds of conversations too that I can make a claim like that.
John, I think an entry plan's really important. I know Kathy did it when she took over. Uh, I think it gives you the opportunity to take a fresh look at everything and to find out where we are lacking and some things that you need to focus on and concentrate on. Um, and it's easy to get lost, I think, you know, in Kathy's case, she did a tremendous job across the board, but she had so much energy and so much time committed to the building project, um, so that there may be some things that you've picked up on that, you know, she didn't necessarily, you know, focus on. I also agree with Mel a hundred percent. I'm not surprised one bit by the survey. I think if you would ask me those questions, I could have predicted within five or ten points exactly where the faculty-staff responses would have been. And I think that the areas that we received obviously low, low percentages on, um, are a reflection of their frustration to a great extent, as Mel pointed out, with the lack of supplies, professional development, things like that, so it was not a surprise there. The issue that we have to deal with now is to find resources and a way to, to resolve those problems, so. But overall, great job and I'll open it up to the audience. If anybody has a question or comment, feel free to recognize.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the PARC update. I'm going to ask our assistant superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Daly, to give us that update. I know this has been a subject that's been, uh, somewhat hot in the community and Patrick's been experiencing this firsthand, so Patrick, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I do have a presentation, I don't know if folks want to...
The only thing I'd ask again, if, if there's questions for Patrick, just go through the chair, okay? Just to keep this organized.
As we, as we take our seats, I thought I, I would just take a moment to publicly acknowledge and thank my, uh, good friend and, and secretary, Thea Peach, who passed away, um, within the last few weeks. She was a tremendous, tremendous value to our school district. She was much more than a secretary, giving professional development, running databases, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge, uh, her great service to the district. So I have two, uh, pieces tonight, uh, PARC and educator evaluation. And, uh, I'll start with the PARC piece and then we will move into, into educator evaluation. Some of the slides, uh, I've used in, in previous presentations, um, at our public forums and some others contain some new information tonight. I just wanted to start with some clarification of some information about facts. PARC and MCAS assessment are designed to measure the Common Core standards. Both PARC and MCAS are designed, uh, to, to measure the Common Core. PARC was designed with Common Core in mind. MCAS has been adapted to measure Common Core, but both tests have been measuring Common Core, uh, for the last few years. It's, it's very, uh, I always want to emphasize that North Reading is test-driving PARC. We have not adopted anything here. We are, we are part of a, a group that's test-driving this new test in order to provide feedback to the Department of Education. I'm going to share some of the developments that are coming out of our forums for, for providing feedback and we're in a great position to have some real specifics to comment. And again, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education will vote to adopt PARC or a next-generation MCAS in the fall of two thousand and fifteen. PARC again is the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness in College and Careers. It's made up of twelve states and it designs assessments and resources that align to the Common Core. I've made this analogy before that, think of the Common Core standards are not the same as the PARC. The Common Core standards, think of that as the, the driver's manual, um, and the rules of the road. Those are your standards that help inform our thinking. And the assessment itself would be, think of it as the driving test. You've got both your road test and then also a written test. PARC similarly has a performance-based assessment, which would be similar to your hands-on, like a road test, and then it also have its end-of-year assessment, which is similar in some ways to what we think of as our, um, our written test with a, with a driving, uh, analogy there. This explains a little bit more of what these two pieces look like. So part one, the performance-based assessment, is what we're taking part in now in late March and early April. For English Language Arts, it measures the effectiveness of writing and analyzing of print, video, text. If it's on the computer, it would be video. If it's on paper, it would be a, a second and third writing assignment, uh, reading passage. For mathematics, this would be the multi-step problem-solving and also using abstract reading, so reasoning. So the skills that take a little bit more time to, for students to complete and for those testing, uh, and correcting the assessments to assess. The end-of-year is the computer-scored, um, portion of this assignment. It's multiple choice. This is the reading comprehension for English Language Arts and it's for some of those major grade-level appropriate math concepts and mathematics that can be scored, uh, through multiple choice. So that's what the end-of-year looks like. Again, this is our continuum of where we are with the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. The arrow indicates where we are at the moment. We are currently in the operational PARC and MCAS testing. And in the fall of two thousand and fifteen, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education will vote whether to adopt PARC or to go with the next-generation MCAS. We've seen these slides before. We are, and I just bolded the red there, we are part of the group and the fifty-four percent is pretty, pretty even split across the state. Those districts that are still continuing with MCAS this year and those districts that are, are taking a, a preview of, of what could be next with PARC. We are also in, in red here in the top, grades three through eight, we have fifty percent of districts that are administering on the computer. We have one school doing that and twenty percent of the districts are doing it on paper. So we have our other four schools are doing paper. If you notice, we're doing Algebra One on paper and there's fifteen districts. Twenty-one percent of those administering in grades nine or eleven are doing it on paper. So we're kind of in a minority there and, uh, it's interesting though, again, that our teachers are the ones who made that suggestion that they didn't want to see, uh, the results of an Algebra One assessment for ninth grade. So an update, there is a technology funding to districts, uh, that, that is available. The testing doesn't drive the devices by any means, but in some ways, uh, the, the need for testing and the need for devices for testing has really shined a light on the needs in districts to not only have devices, but to really improve their infrastructure. And a lot of what's coming out of these computer-based assessment, uh, infrastructure trials is that districts don't quite have the capacity we need. As you know, this building has full wireless capacity. This is the only building that has it. We've come up with some solutions that have worked fairly well at the elementary schools, but we really do need to have a robust wireless system at our elementary schools as we do at our, uh, high school and middle school next year. So this is a state technology bill that is, is meant to improve the, uh, access of broadband and improve education through the use of technology. Thirty-eight million dollars, of which five million has been appropriated. So North Reading, we applied for this grant and the good news is that we are now a candidate for funding that, what that means is we're not getting funded this year and we're in that next group that needs to just make a few changes to the grant and we're, we're in that tier, so we're ahead of anybody else who didn't know already applied for the grant. So we're in a very good place to, uh, receive this funding if that, uh, remaining thirty-three million is allocated by the governor and they're, they're optimistic. This may require some slight changes to some of what we've talked about before. One thing that we may need to absolutely, uh, be more explicit about is an actual one-to-one program. As you know, we've, we've entertained one-to-one, but we haven't really approached it that way. We've gone with a cart model. They need to, they may need, need to see us take steps towards having one-to-one devices either in one grade level at a school or in one subject area. So, um, that might be a direction you might hear more from us about as we are looking to, uh, to have these funds. The way this grant would work is that the state would match, uh, the district would have to match, I'm sorry, the town would have to match funds, but we could get the, the money from the state in order to pay for the infrastructure and then the town would be able to buy devices with that. So it's a great opportunity that hopefully we'll take a part of. There were, due to these delays with the weather and the snow, there were, uh, testing window extensions. So all of the testing windows were extended by approximately one week. All of our schools took advantage of those testing window extensions. We approached it in slightly different ways for different places. So there was a time on learning. Uh, in some schools, they said, we have this extended window, we need to use those days to make up for some time on learning that was missed. Um, we also considered other schools that we could maybe spread out some of the testing so that we're not trying to pit, uh, fit as many sessions into each day. Uh, that was definitely in consideration at the batch and, uh, so we've used a lot of that window and that, that has been helpful. MCAS was also affected by, uh, these testing windows and we did make some changes to our MCAS schedules, uh, at the high school as well, and some of the other, uh, schools that are testing the science MCAS. So a refresher, who's taking PARC? The blue is the PARC state, so, I'm sorry, PARC, uh, subject areas, grades three to eight math and English Language Arts and grade nine algebra. A reminder, what's there in red is that the MCAS alt will continue to be an MCAS assessment for students who are taking an alternative assessment. Grade ten will continue to take the MCAS. Grades five and eight will take the science MCAS and our biology, uh, MCAS will continue at the high school level. So where are we right now? Batch Elder is taking on the computer-based testing. We have computers in the Chromebooks in the lab and that testing began on March sixteenth. At the little school in the hood school, the paper-based, uh, based testing began today. And the middle school and the high school, the paper-based testing begins on March thirty-first. So just an update on the computer-based testing. I want to really thank Sean Colleen, uh, the principal of the Batch Elder, the teachers and staff. This has been an additional challenge. Uh, we've learned quite a bit from our infrastructure trials, but just taking this test on computers has really been an eye-opening experience. I want to take a moment to say our entire tech team, especially Nan Cook, our data specialist and Nicholas Langford, have really taken on a tremendous amount, um, of time and effort to read through all of the daily bulletins coming out from PARC with updates and changes and making sure the computers are ready for everyone. Um, it's a new testing environment for all of us and we, and this is, this has been a great, um, opportunity to learn, but also a, a great effort on their part. We're using the thirty wired computers in the lab. We're using thirty Chromebooks and three sets of thirty Chromebooks that are running a test dab application. And so we've set up those Chromebooks, we've ran all our tests for the months of January and February and we, we've had a lot of success. There's been some minor glitches in the labs, um, and, and errors that are sort of known errors that are happening, but as soon as that error pops up, it's like, uh, just like when you be, might be browsing at home and you have a pop-up, you, you, you exit out and you move on, the tests resume. We've had no, uh, concerns about students losing material or students getting frustrated. A lot of improvements in the testing itself from what we saw last year, so that's been very good for us to observe. So a lot of information that our tech team has learned from that. Um, on the paper-based testing, again, I want to thank Nan because it's, it's important to realize that, um, you know, PARC is really a computer-based test with a paper version. This is not, so it's designed as a computer-based test in mind. So even things that in the past we may have done on paper, all needed to be uploaded, um, to the system previously, uh, prior to the test. So Nan's done quite a bit of work with that. A lot of work at all schools, computer and paper-based, by our special educators and teachers, working with accommodations and getting all that information into the system. Unlike MCAS paper where you can make a decision at the last minute about where people are placed for combinations, all of this needed to be uploaded prior to the testing window. And so Nan, the special educators, principals and teachers have worked on that. So what the students are seeing though, in many ways, the testing environment is very similar. It's paper and pencil with a proctor in the room, so that piece is very similar. But again, this is a computer-based test and they've, a, a lot of the pieces of it work, you can see, even the way the questions are written on the paper, it's actually, will function better in a computer-based environment. And they've said as much to us at meetings we've been to. So that, we will be receiving data for PARC this year. Each school and district will receive accountability scores, but the school and the district are held harmless this year as we test-drive this new assessment. So if our scores go down for whatever reason, we're only, as far as our accountability levels, we're only held to the standard of our scores from last year. Students and parents will receive scores for individual student achievement as well as for growth, so they're going to come up with a matrix to, uh, a metric to measure the growth from MCAS to PARC. And those scores may be received later this fall than in the past few years. They figure this is a brand-new test, there's a lot that needs to be decided in terms of scoring and cut scores and those determinations. And there, those, we, we should anticipate getting some of that information later this year than we may have received in the past. There are accommodations for PARC. Many of those accommodations are now universally incorporated into PARC and available to all students. We've had quite a lot of discussions about, uh, some of these pieces, about, uh, the use of graphic organizers or the, or the graphic organizers not being allowed. There's a lot of room for feedback, I think, with what accommodations have been, uh, beneficial to students and what we feel have been, uh, hindering. So there's a lot of information coming in on those. A reminder that PARC is a timed assessment. That's a lot, we're getting a lot of feedback about how, when the students go into the session, the day, um, is not disrupted as it was with MCAS. The session ends and you go back to your business. So we've heard a lot of feedback on that already. And students' IPs have been updated to provide students with all the accommodations that are needed. So there's more information. We had our public forums on January twenty-first and January twenty-second. Uh, we've, we've updated our, our North Reading Schools page. There's a lot of links to resources, videos, articles and forums we've had over the years. And there's links there to practice tests and tutorials for folks to find more information. So here's a little bit of what people are saying about PARC. This is, um, some things that I've heard from North Reading educators and I've updated this from our earlier slides to include what I've heard most recently. We're definitely hearing PARC is rigorous, if not more rigorous. In fact, some questions about whether questions are, are appropriate for grade levels. So when you hear that the, the, the standards or the test is not as rigorous, I, I say that's very different than what we're hearing from our educators in North Reading. Um, I've heard from everyone that, you know, computer-based testing, people see that this is the future from the Batch Elder School. That doesn't mean it's perfect, doesn't mean there's not a lot of issues, but people see the efficiency of the model. And it's definitely the cues we're, we're seeing from the, from the state as well. There's definitely a learning curve for PARC, especially for the computer-based piece. Um, and it took some time, but, a-again, that's why we took some time to run some infrastructure trials, but it's going very, very well, um, as far as the technology this week. PARC is different than MCAS and we've noticed that. It's, it's not, it's not the same. The questions are different. There's an opportunity for some, uh, creative writing in some of the passages, um, but in some ways, as I mentioned before, it's very rigorous and there are some concerns about that. Teachers have said that they feel that questions better assess the Common Core standards, but that's an ongoing, uh, question that I'm asking the teachers. Do we feel that the questions that, that we're seeing in these practice tests are get, are better getting at the Common Core standards? Very important point, it's really been an all-hands-on-deck. So we have four to five technology team members, um, leaving only two at other places. So we've had all-hands-on-deck and one of those tech team members is actually an additional staff member that we're paying, uh, part-time. So really, to do this at one school successfully for two weeks, we've needed all of our tech team on deck at that building. And that's definitely a concern I have moving forward. Part of the reason why we need to expand some of our technology help. So we've got our, our network administrator, our data specialist and our digital learning specialist, as well as a part-time, uh, help there, helping at the Batch Elder School. So if this were to expand to computers at multiple schools, we would definitely need to see that support from additional technology team to make sure it's successful. I want to be clear too, that we're not saying that everyone's glowing about PARC and, and it's definitely, there's many mixed feelings. Many teachers have, uh, opinions and we will be collecting data. We will be having surveys for staff to collect that, uh, opinion so that when we are asked to go to forums, um, we will have some, some, uh, data from the district and I'll be sharing that with you as well about folks', uh, their feelings about the PARC assessment and also about the PARC on the computer. I think those are two very important things to collect information on. A few quotes about what's happening, as we know this is a very political topic. Uh, the teacher's MTA president, Barbara Matteloni, says, "There's a place for taking a temperature, but that measurement doesn't have to take place every year and every grade and every school and every district." So there's a lot of questions about there about over-testing. Uh, the Higher Education Commissioner, Richard Freelance, said in January that, "Higher Ed cannot do what it needs to unless we change the current system," speaking about assessments. Governor Baker this month says he's directing Paul Sagan, the new Board of Elementary and Secondary Education member, and the Board to initiate a series of public hearings around the state, which will solicit feedback from educators, parents, students and local officials on the PARC exam and the real-world impact of Common Core standards on teaching and learning. "I am deeply committed to standards-based education grounded in a high-quality assessment system." The governor has said he is committed to standards and to assessments, but there's a question about which standards, which assessments, and they really want this to be a public process, which I know, again, that North Reading will have a lot of feedback because we've actually seen, taken and lived through this test drive of the exam and we're very much, uh, in the front lines, learning about this every day. Secretary Pfizer says, "Our view is there's a decision coming in the fall and we need to sort of lay the groundwork for making an informed decision by gathering all the data we can about the rigor of Park relative to MCAS and the extent to which it represents a truer or better measure for college readiness." Commissioner Chester responding to some of this concern. He says, "I know many of you have concerns. This is addressed to parents, that there's too much testing in our schools today. I share those concerns. We are gathering data on what tests are being given and how the results are being used to help guide future policy decisions. We're also working to reduce the time needed for state assessments." And then in response to the governor's comments, the commissioner says that he welcomes this, these public forums to discuss whether the state were to adopt Park in the future. So there's quite a lot that's coming between now and the fall and we are gathering that information from our PBA at this time. We'll have more information on the end-of-year testing in the next few months. So I can break here and take questions on Park.
Questions and comments on the school committee first. Mel?
I have a bunch. I'll keep to a minimum right now. Just for clarification, you said in October, the DESE will decide Park or Next Gen MCAS or it could be another test altogether, correct? I mean, it doesn't have to be Park or Next Gen MCAS, right? It could be, I don't think it'll be smarter balance, but it could be another test, right?
I think it could be. I have not, I've never heard that suggestion. I've always heard it be either, it's going to be the Next Gen MCAS or it's going to be Park.
I thought I heard, and maybe I was wrong. I thought that maybe it was the assistant commissioner was at deframing him, school committee last week, and I thought he said, "There's a possibility that it could be another test." I mean, I'm sure that-
I think there's always a possibility it could be something totally different. I mean, smarter balance is a completely different type of test. And I know the department doesn't see that. It's an adaptive test and it doesn't really measure anywhere the same way that MCAS does. There's a lot of good ideas out there for totally different outside-the-box assessments. They could go in a different direction. But that, everything that they presented to us has said the choices between Park or, I mean, those are the two that we've test-driven. I would imagine if they were to go with any kind of other assessment than MCAS or Park, you would be in for another few years of piloting, test-driving, all that. They could, I couldn't imagine them just making a third choice sweeping in there this fall.
Okay, I'll ask two others for now. One, is there any way to measure student feedback experience from the first day at the batch? Do we have any kind of, either, even anecdotal data about how the students did?
Sure. I could, I can definitely try to collect that. We've, I've got that through the principal and through the teachers. The stress level, as reported to me, for teachers and students has been very low. And that's, again, where I credit my tech because we wanted to, the second a student gets on and they're using the testing and something doesn't work, the frustration level goes very high. So we work very hard to make user experience very friendly and I've heard that things went very well for teachers and for students. But I would love to collect more information and that's part of, I will collect some student feedback as well as teacher feedback in that respect. And I can do that very soon so that it's fresh in their minds. I think that's important. I don't want to take a lot of their time gathering that, but I do want to collect that.
And the final question I'll ask right now is, you know, one of my concerns, I know one of the concerns of Barbara Matteloni is it is, is using these new tests as part of the EDDY Val system. Hasn't there been an option put out there that we could ask for a waiver for a year if we wanted to, or is that a state decision? That decision the state has to make as opposed to individual school districts?
I'll speak to that a little bit with the educator evaluation. My understanding is that it's still required to use MCAS or Park data for those teachers that are in, that are in areas where testing is required. However, there are some options which I'll discuss about delaying all of that reporting and collection. And I think that is in line with the idea that we're experiencing something brand-new, so why would we link it now?
That's exactly right.
The link is still there, but I think the timelines, and I'll speak to that actually in the EDDY Val piece. Good question.
Thanks.
Questions from committee members for the EDDY Val?
I had a question. You talked about that grant, the 38 and they're releasing five.
Yeah.
Is it kind of similar to the building committee where we did a, we got and we made the list and then we had to get it approved by the town and they would give us like 50 cents on the dollar? Is that kind of the same thing that this is?
Similar. We would have to commit, we would have to have the town commit to match the funds. So we've, we've taken some steps to let the town know that this is out there. We have a process for obtaining large capital funds and so, I don't know if you want to-
No, that's it, matching grant.
So, so we've kind of laid the groundwork that this could be out there. So it's part of our proposal that we made a few months ago. We actually have a proposal for next year about infrastructure. And so the good news might be that, hey, some of this funding that we've got in line for the large capital can be matched by the state. And then we could actually free up some of that money to possibly buy new devices. That's what we're hoping for, if this goes through. So it's not, it's not quite the same. It's actually through the process that we already have in place to get those matching funds.
And then the other thing is, on the new MCAS, have you seen what it's going to look like at all, or they just keep saying it will be a new one?
Sure. They've been developing right alongside, so actually, a lot of the same people, my understanding, that work at the Department of Education are sitting on the Park Board and they're also designing MCAS. So they're designing new questions, they're doing a lot of this work in tandem to develop those. But as far as what a new MCAS would look like, whether it's on a computer, all those questions remain to be seen. I haven't seen anything specific to that. Again, I imagine that they would consider the work that's gone in and the money that's gone into developing a computer-based system and think about ways they could leverage that, whether it's MCAS or Park. You'd hope that at least this engine that was built for the computer could be used in some way and wouldn't need to be reinvented and millions of dollars pumped into a brand-new system. I think that's hopefully what they're going to discuss in the fall, but we haven't seen any of that.
Okay. One last question. You said that the teachers at the batch and the students have had a low stress. How did they handle the time situation? I know in the past, MCAS, my daughter used to take forever and, you know, she'd be in the library finishing up while the kids were in the classroom doing other things. But where there's that timed thing, did they find that there were several students, few students, you know, what was like the range of that finished quickly and then how many didn't get to finish?
Sure. I haven't collected all the data in all the classes, but what I did hear anecdotally from the principal was that, and from, from a few principals, very few of the students that, we kind of went above and beyond giving the extended time, which was just like having the whole day, to more students this year just to be safe, and they found that none of them are using it. That's, they really came back saying they're not using that extended time. The students are, the conversation we've heard is that students feel like, they like that they come in and it's done and they move on to the, and they go back to the classroom. So that's what we've heard. I don't have the specific data this year yet on how many students are actually using, sort of, you get the 60 minutes and then you get an extra 30 minutes. Like, I don't have the data on how many went over or under, but I'm hearing that there's been absolutely no issues where students feel like they're pressured to end and they have to leave. It's quite the opposite. They're all done on time and even those that are given that extended time haven't been using it. That's what I've heard so far. But it's very early at this stage. I want to get more data on that to answer.
In fact, just following up what you mean, so it seems to me that whether it's a computer-based test, we need some type of a long-term plan, you know, people have the technology so that everybody can go and take it on a computer, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, I know you spoke a little bit about that. What do you see as a timeframe for doing something like that? And I know we're looking at the grant development as well.
Sure. So are you speaking North Reading or is this a state?
North Reading.
North Reading, yeah. I'm optimistic that they will not require this to be on computers next year. I'm thinking there's districts that are telling us, that are telling the state they can't even get, you know, wireless in their buildings or even hard internet in their buildings. There's some districts I've heard are having those struggles. I think, I'm hoping that we have the option and maybe what we would do in North Reading is expand, do one more school. So maybe next year it's the middle school and the batch and the high school or something like that.
I really was concerned with consistency and continuity throughout the district test that EDDY Val is being looked at.
Can I follow up on that? Is there any chance or because of security reasons, et cetera, would they ever allow a BYOD testing? So kids bring their own computers or their own iPads or whatever, Chromebooks, whatever it is?
Yeah, I think that's a big concern with the security and it's not allowed at this point. Those devices, and I couldn't even imagine how we would handle that. It's so difficult to manage our own devices. We have to actually completely lock the devices down and turn off all of any of the updates because within a day, if a new update comes out from Google and it's not updating Pearson, they send out a memo, "Don't do the latest update or go back to version 39." I mean, trying to manage that through a management system where we can push a button and push it out to 30 devices at once is hard enough. It would be almost impossible to do that with 30 student devices.
It's a shame though. I mean, I know it's different, but in business they have policies where, you know, they have bring-your-own-device policies where that policy, that device when you're, is kind of controlled for your work environment, but I guess you still do have access to the personal side of it. But it just, because if we, if they could figure out a way to do that, most of these kids, or a large percentage are going to be able to bring something. We don't want to take them to test on a phone, but, you know, but it's too bad they can't figure that out.
It would be nice if they could, I agree. And I think we definitely embrace that for the learning side of the things, you know, and I think we do have a policy that will, that will be able to do that for, for digital learning. But for the testing, it's so strict about what can be on there and what can't. I understand that as well.
The other question I had was, how many schools have chosen not to make the test for?
Sure.
Twenty-four?
Yes, twenty-five. We'll break down for you at this time.
That's more than you expect?
No, that's about what we would expect. It's, the refusal is at this point, one at the high school, six at the middle school, two at the Batch Elder, 12 at the Hood and four at the Little School.
So the Hood seems to be the holdout school.
At this time, there's, there's the most students that are refusing Park at those schools.
Were you given any reasons by parents or students or anybody as to why they chose not to take the test? Did it pay with you or anybody?
Sure. You know, our process for this was, you know, the, we wanted to take a really grassroots approach. Our approach was to have, you know, what the commissioner suggested was make sure parents and students understand that if you refuse to take the test, there are some complications that could arise. And so we said, instead of just handing out a piece of paper or something, we invited parents to come in to make sure they fully understood what, what it meant to refuse the test. And so the parents of students that wanted to refuse were invited in. If they weren't able to come in, I believe they were, they were able to sign the letter. It was just a letter that John had composed that, that basically just made sure that they understood fully what they were asking for when they were refusing a park. And we fully respected that, that right at this time and we have, you know, students at every school that are refusing. They're being provided with a meaningful activity during that time. And, you know, unfortunately, they won't have the data moving forward to make growth comparisons. They're losing a lot of, a lot of that data that's being collected through the test. They're missing out on that.
I'm curious though, did you get reasons from the parents as to why they did not want to take the test?
I'm not, I'm not sure, John, if you know some of those-
Yeah, so how it typically happened was the parent would write a letter or an email to the principal. And I would say that some of those letters or emails were much more detailed than others. And those that had details were, I would say, was largely in opposition to the test itself, to the Common Core, you know.
Opposition to the Common Core, rather than real-
Philosophical, I would say.
I would, I would, I would say that that, that was a reason cited and others just were much simpler and said that they just did not want their child to participate.
But do you think the majority of all students were taking Park test, what percentage of all students?
If we had third through eight, we're taking Park.
Third through eight and then grade nine with the algebra.
It's very small, right?
Yeah, not, not a large. And I think at the, I think at the Hood School with the 12, I think there was one in grade four. It was, it was an odd split. It was one student in grade four. Yeah, not, not, not large.
All right, thank you. If it's helpful to comment on the EDDY Val, I don't know if we have anything else.
I'll take a mic drop, yeah.
Anybody in the audience who wants to comment?
What do you see as the predicted timeframe for the state to take the test? Will it be predictive readiness in getting results?
With the district or with the state? I, sure. The first question, I don't know. I hope that they have the decision by October, November, but they're just saying, oh, I have no idea. I actually, I actually asked the commissioner that question and he didn't quite answer the question. And I was wondering that, the delay in the timing of the report versus the board's decision. I imagine that they, they can't make that decision without getting those scores. Part of their criteria is, is this test as rigorous? They want to look at those scores. I don't know. Chris, you don't know any more detail than I do.
What the commissioner has told us is he intends to go to the board with a recommendation late November, early December. And that's pretty much something with the release of the individual test scores for the Park participants.
Thank you. As far as your second question, I would say any, anything, I would want to be very transparent before we bring it forward to any forums, I'm, I would-
So are there forums scheduled?
Not yet. Not yet. Sure. As I mentioned, the governor has proposed forums to be created. I haven't seen anything yet about those forums. I don't know if anyone's seen those yet. They had similar forums last year for the, for the field test and we were very visible there. Mel was at one, I was at one, I was at two. We gave feedback based on, I collected a lot of data from teachers and from principals and reported that. I mean, a lot, and a lot of those changes that we really stressed upon, especially with the technology accommodations, we've actually seen some of those things come through and that's great. And I will continue to share here and then we'll be public about what's being presented in those forums. And those forums are, hopefully, they're going to be for parents, teachers, administrators and, I believe, committees. And I mean, from what I've seen from the governor, he's looking for all stakeholders to contribute and add their value. And again, I see this as an opportunity where we have some real feedback from the experience to report to the state. And it's, it's not a, you know, foreground conclusion that we're going to say, please support Park by any means. We're collecting that information now to see how well it pans.
And the question about the technical, you mentioned, you said something about the matching fund, the district, the student commitment to follow by the law. Are we in a position to be active, looking at our budget for next year?
Sure.
Well, I think, I think a lot of it depends on how much, if we look at a capital fund request perhaps even in October, a month, a month, we have to have at least somebody that will do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I wouldn't rule it out if we ruled it out by the district.
Sure. And it's not the district budget, it's the town funds. So the town would have to match it through our large grant process, which we have.
That would be for infrastructure, not devices.
No, it would be for devices. The town, the, the state side has to be used for infrastructure and the town would need to match that. So we would, we would adjust the numbers to make something doable in the grant, but we took all that into consideration when we applied for the grant. So it would need to be matched. So again, as I mentioned, part of our long-term proposal that I presented here before calls for additional infrastructure at the elementary schools in 16, 17, 16 and 17. And this funding would supplement that. So it's actually, it's not, it's actually something that's on, it hasn't been funded at this time, but it's been proposed. These state funds would now help support that request as opposed to having to go back to the well. We've already made that request. It's, you know, it's future cast and this would up support that.
And you mentioned one-to-one, that's the first time I've ever heard it. Is that something that we're going to do?
So, first thing we've heard mentioned here. Yeah, we haven't historically supported a one-to-one, that's not the method we chose. A lot of districts went ahead and did a one-to-one in one-grade, one-subject. We did, took a very different approach where we looked to have one part at every school. We felt more students were exposed to devices and I think it's worked very, very well in a district this size. I continue to say that's a better model. That with a, with a BYOD kind of model makes sense in a district with the funding structure we have. However, there's things that are lost in that kind of a model. In a one-to-one model, iPads especially are very personal devices and you can have your appointments and your books and your schedules on there. That's lost in our model. So a one-to-one model is ideal in some ways, but cost-prohibitive in a lot of other ways. But if they're willing to give us a chunk of support, provided we have a one-to-one[1726.40] one-to-one model, then we absolutely start to exploit it because it makes a lot of sense to explore that and build upon it. Again, at one grade level, at one school. So you might have all the seventh grade with one-to-one as, as a starting point. If that's what they're looking for in order to, to, to give us that grant, then we will definitely look in that direction. We've definitely talked about one-to-one a lot here and explored it, but it wasn't cost feasible at the time. So we went with this park model, which has been, uh, got a lot, a lot more devices, a lot more students' hands at all grade levels in our district, and I'm, I'm very proud of that. I think that's really cool.
Anybody else want to?
I think they can answer this when they were answering Denise's question. But do you see, given the change in administration, park is not just a test, it is a platform, an engine, an application. Do you see the possibility for a hybrid solution where the state controls the content and therefore the, the framework as well, yet still uses the engine? Do you think that's happening?
Yeah, I, I know I can't speak to that, but I really, I like that idea. And again, I think to try and, I mean, millions of dollars have been put into developing an engine. I think, I think there's promise in that, but I, I really can't speak, I really have no idea. But I'm intrigued by that.
When this, do you take some notes for the parent side of what's been going on?
I just, um, I did want to mention, I read, and I didn't read the congressman that's filing it, but I think there's a bill that was supposed to be introduced today regarding data, um, data sharing. Um, and that bill would basically set a minimum requirement for all states, and then the states could have more rigorous protection in, you know, if the states wanted to pass individual bills. I saw that was going on today. It was, um, it's an interesting chart, and I couldn't get it to print, but it showed on a state-by-state basis what states are, are doing or trying to do to protect data for their students. And most states aren't doing much. They've, they're trying to, but most of them haven't gotten, um, laws approved. Uh, question I had is, um, one of the things that I was wondering about, and maybe this is a dumb question, and since I didn't take crack at MCAS, of course, I'm, I can't really, maybe I'm a dumb guy, but, um, this whole thing with cut scores, isn't there a way to determine cut scores prior to tests being given? I, don't they have, um, for, I just, I don't understand why we're not determining cut scores until after the tests are taken. And I just wonder if that's the way it's always done.
That's, that's how it's been done in the top of the MCAS. It actually changes a lot in the first few years of implementation.
Okay.
You, there's lots of, when you're getting into assessment design, you're talking about the rigor of the questions, the difficulty of the questions, trying to figure out whether or not, uh, a score is, is, is valid before you can determine that cut score. If the questions are too hard and they've got a predetermined cut score, all the, it's going to look like everyone failed, but actually they didn't.
See, I was wondering if you could look at MCAS results and somehow crosswalk those over to cut scores for a new test.
Yeah, you really can't because the test is very different. It is. And it's, it's interestingly enough, when we talk about DDMs, that's exactly what we're saying to the state is, you're asking us to report scores, and we haven't had time to determine the validity of some of our own assessments that we're developing. So it, it's that process that is going through.
Okay.
And I think, just to address a question from earlier too, I did have the opportunity to attend one of the forums that was held in town with some, some viewpoints about concerns that parents and community had about park and this invalid concerns. Uh, the data is one that's, I think is being addressed and needs to be addressed, um, well beyond testing. I think it's just in general with everything in society about who's got our information. I think that's a, a good concern. Uh, questions about standards, where they came from, how they came to be, and how we can improve our standards moving forward. I think there's a lot of valuable information that's being discussed, and I think it's a, it's a good discussion to be, to be having in our town and statewide.
Do you think when you come to say you had some feedback from the parents reacting?
From my perspective, it's generally my kids actually saying, yeah, could you go tell the school committee what we think? And I'm like, is it good?
Do I want to hear this?
Maybe.
All right, go ahead.
So I wrote down.
Maybe you should, but just briefly, okay.
You know, you don't get a lot of parents showing up at school committee meetings, so I thought it would help to hear what's going on. So I wrote down my park, the good, the bad, and the ugly.
Thank you.
I have a third grader and a sixth grader. My third grader's at the batch, so we will be taking him online. She did not take it today. She's getting it for Wednesday. Um, I took the third grade PDA practice test online following her. Like, thank you very much. Unfortunately, I'm probably in the minority of parents. I don't think many people did go online and take the full test.
I did. I did the sixth grader.
The sixth grader, right?
Yeah.
But you, you said you skipped the algebra.
Actually, I was going to do algebra.
Because there'd be no chance I would get one right.
The good side of it is because I did it online because that's what I was worried about. And I was like, oh my God, how are they ever going to do this? I found that I didn't have any trouble navigating through the pages or answering the questions. The software didn't give me any trouble. I think that my children have enough exposure to technology at home to take this test. Um, the ELA section was pretty straightforward. Responding to the math questions is a little confusing. It really doesn't make a lot of sense how you're, I'm used to typing things in. That's not what I can do here. Um, I think that as a school district, and especially at the batch, we spent way too much time learning about how to take this online. It's, it's really not necessary. The, some of the bad side is obviously we have criteria requirements. I've got some problems with the content, which is just a general statement right now because even in our math homework, I have some trouble with learning because when you go on a national level, I mean, God forbid they ever put a word problem on there that talks about soda, tonic, cola, pop. It just doesn't, you can't write a question that works across the nation. I think that having these unfair procedures of how to answer questions on math is making everybody nervous, and I imagine that when you're actually taking the test, it's going to be worse. Um, I'm embarrassed to admit that I did not get a perfect score on the ELA. On one of the questions, I did not notice that I needed to select more than one answer. When you go to your reading page, because you have an answer, it marks it as answered.
It's not, you know, you spotted on the third grade.
Exactly.
No, but that's, I just want to comment on that. That, that was a, that was an issue that I had, that some questions require two answers. And now, hopefully, the instructor is telling the students that because I didn't have anybody telling me that, and I had the same issue where I didn't.
And I don't think that they can much get into the actual test environment.
Right. We talked, that's one of those changes between park and MCAS. We did spend time, uh, making sure students understood that. I'll just say too, that we're hearing a lot about, not, not from the actual test, because you, technically, we're not actually looking at the questions on the actual test, but on the practice test, we are finding a lot of errors, a lot of questions, more than you probably should when it's been through these many eyes and that. But that happened absolutely with MCAS when it came out. I mean, it took years to work on that test. That happens with the newest test.
And, and that's my next note is, I think that just exposure to the test and just the revisions should improve that area of concern, but it's really this year going to be difficult for the kids to spend that extra time just trying to understand what the question was asking when you're in a timed environment. Um, my response to the first essay question, which unfortunately my, my third grader, third, this is why I typed, was, are you serious? The question used two stories. At first, I thought I was comparing the stories and providing similarity, but it actually, which is not a third grade standard. Um, so I went back and read it again and said, oh, they're just asking the same question for both of these stories, and I think they just put it there to make you have a longer essay. Uh, the math standard was you need to be able to recount stories, determine central message, lesson, moral, and explain how it's conveyed through key details. But when you put two stories there and make it your question, having two answers seems to be setting our kids up to fail because they're going to get a very disjointed, convoluted essay response. Now for the ugly. Well, my sixth grader, his homework tonight is park. It's a handout. He is doing park. We are doing homework that is park. That's all we ever do. We practice for park. My third grader, we never even get to do anything in computers except park practice. How do I type an essay when I haven't even learned how to type? Preparing for park has been time-consuming and disruptive to the school year. The snow's been disruptive, and the always-changing math program can be added to the list. Perhaps park is just the straw that broke the camel's back. I understand the questions are supposed to align with what's being taught. We obviously, as you know, have some vertical alignment problems, and the third grade's having some difficulty because they do not get everything they need for second grade. Um, but I feel like someone was forcing me to switch from Verizon to Comcast. All the channels are there, but you can't find.
This is you speaking now, yeah?
This is me.
I just wanted to share.
But you can't find, and I'm missing my favorite shows.
Stay with Comcast.
Exactly. I did.
And it's going to have to do with fact.
But it's hard. Have you switched? Have you ever switched?
I can't.
Oh.
I can't.
So are we spending too much time in this preparation for park? It's something that I think you want to hear from the batch parents as you bring it to another school. It was time-consuming. We're spending a lot of time just getting ready. Are we, in general, spending too much time on standardized test assessments? Are we trying to hit each and every individual standard for the new framework? When I compared my previous experience in third grade to this year, I found several things missing. My daughter's class hasn't had time to learn about or create their own fables. There is not enough time for a project where they get to look at a picture with a caption and write a story that goes along with it.
You don't get a second page, you know?
No. There is not enough time for them to look at how an author uses illustrations to develop their story. And while I understand that there may not be enough time for individual reading scoops, as they used to be called, I'm not, I'm two-thirds of the way through the school year, and my child has not even written a book report. Not one.
Well, I'm not sure I'll necessarily to the, to the exam.
It's not.
I have some obviously issues with the way.
That's what I'm saying. It's not the exam, but it's the amount of time we're spending preparing for the exam this year because I'm not sure that a parent from another school would see the same thing.
Well, obviously, it's true, and I think that's part of it.
It is. Part of the growing pains, um, I, I would say that, you know, I, I think we talk to our third grade teachers, they would say all of those things are in the curriculum. Um, like I said, it has been challenging at the batch, especially, um, I, I wouldn't say it's exhausted. We haven't lost, you know, maybe, we're losing like an hour, you know, an extra hour to do the testing with, with some classes because there were some tech glitches. We tried things out. And there's something, I, I'll be honest with you, I actually believe there's something to be said for what those students learned through the technology engineering, you know, the, the process of, I had students actually trying things on two computers. They learned more about how to, how we were assessing a tech problem, which is a real-world skill. I mean, I, you don't want to, obviously, you're not going to spend a lot of time on that, but I actually saw a huge value. I was in the room with those students and said, you, you know, you're trying this out for me. And they were actually troubleshooting, and they were great at it. One, and they reached you in a different way. One kid wanted to use one hand and another hand. Uh, I had them working at two different computers, uh, really to, to really stress out a computer, to think it through, to say, we're going to have everyone answer question fifteen, and everyone play video to make sure it worked. You can't do that all, but that, that's just about as valuable a lesson you can learn in a computer class, um, as, as others. But if we were spending weeks and weeks and weeks on test prep, um, but that perception is very important. If students feel that their homework is park, that's not a good thing to hear. So I think that's important. I'm glad you shared that.
And, and I don't think that these projects per se each student needs, but I think the common theme I noticed was that all of these projects are the ones that require the most hands-on from a teacher, and that maybe those teachers just don't have that time this year to do these in-depth, the ones, those kinds of projects that need iterative feedback and reinforcement with each and every individual student. They're just, they just are, they have a lot going on.
I haven't, I haven't heard that from the teachers, but I, I will definitely ask that question. If they feel that they lost because of prep, test prep, did you lose time to do assignments? But, um, I, I can assure you, you walk into those schools, you're seeing tons of, uh, tons of those kind of projects being done all the classroom.
That's good feedback. That's good feedback.
So, you know, Buffy, I respect, she's highly involved in her kids' education and in our system. Spent many hours with her, um, at end room meeting Friday morning as well as Julie was there. I, I guess the question I have is this. I'm not questioning anything you said, but I'll ask you, are you hearing, there's hundreds of kids taking the, the park at the batch. Are you getting this kind of feedback from anybody else? And if not, I ju, I just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to put, you know, taking what I hear from someone I respect versus not hearing it from anybody else. And it just, so it's hard to kind of put the pieces together. That's all.
And I haven't, but I think we're hearing across the state, across the country, test fatigue, too much time on testing.
That I agree with.
Versus, I mean, I, I think we've all heard that. I think we all agree.
We were hearing that before.
With that piece. Yeah, it's, it's, it's within any assessment.
Oh, Julie, go ahead.
I just want to echo what you said, and I appreciate your, your thoughts. Um, my son is a freshman. He has, you know, some test prep in his classroom. And a couple weeks ago, he had in the ELA class, a vocab test, and he said to me, Mom, can you help me study? I said, absolutely. Give me your list. At the top of the, of the list, it's the park terminology. And I just, I said, give me ten minutes because I need to walk away from this. Um, I think it's inappropriate, um, as an educator, to think about what vocab words should have been done in place of that for a test that he will not be taking this year. Um, and I did, you know, contact, and it just resonated with me, and she agreed. Um, but I think it's, that stuff is going on. You may not be hearing it from a lot of parents.
But isn't there some educational value to that?
I'm just saying, if it's just.
And, and the subjectivity that you're looking at that, that's your opinion, Julie, and I respect your opinion because you are an educator. But I'm not sure that each individual parent can be looking at what we're teaching and what we're testing on and decide individually, this is what I prefer, this is what I prioritize. But I, I respect their opinions because you're both highly involved. But at the same time, I think there's public state, there's some educational value regardless of how you lay, whether it's park or MCAS or just general vocabulary homework.
But the whole reason why we learned vocab the way we do is driven by the SATs for years and years.
Yeah.
I was taught very, very much analogies in a certain way because that's how it's on the SAT. I mean, that part of it is part of, you know, learn.
I just, I mean, I just question, if we were taking MCAS, we wouldn't have spent that whole week that earning those words.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually not.
But there's a new test.
I think you would have. I think, I think you do that every year with students. You always, you know, because you don't want to set them up, we, we do spend, test anxiety, so you want them to understand the terms associated with any kind of assessment. Words are used in a certain way on an assessment. Uh, the verbs have changed a little bit, so there's a new updated list, but that, that absolutely happens with any assessment, whether it's MCAS, SAT assessments we give here. You want students to have those skills, test-taking skills of being able to, uh, thrive in an authentic environment, a testing environment. You do need to spend a little bit of time on that just so you don't, you know, set them up for failure when they get in that environment in anxiety, so.
I understand for more informational purposes, but to think, say he got a fifty on that test, his grading will reflect.
My, my question for you, I just, I'm, when you said, it said park terminology, what, so what were the, I'm confused what the...
Honestly, I went through.
Yeah.
We studied. He learned them. But I, I, I mean.
But they were different words. Are you saying that they were, were they words that reflected part? Were they different words than you normally would see in a vocabulary test? I'm just trying to.
All right.
Okay.
But you didn't like it being labeled as park?
No, 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 no. I, I, we went forward with it, you know, he knows I'm a speaking wheel and kind of begged me not to say no to it.
I can understand that.
But, um, I just think, you know, those are things that we kind of all need to be aware of, that, that are half.
That's good feedback. That's, that's right. Yes.
Other parents also, I was walking my dog to another parent who did the same thing about that vocabulary test, and I met with him as well, and I said, no, homework should not be assigned. Park homework should not be assigned. That's, there shouldn't be, school time shouldn't be spent on learning how to take a test. And that's the miscommit there. You're saying it has to be learned, but then controlled by the principal. No, you know, the teach, the teacher shouldn't be, we should be on curriculum, not teaching how to take park.
Right.
And so your parents are complaining. They're just not getting the word out. When you, when you talk about feedback from your teachers and your students over at the batch, you never ask the feedback from the parents, all those students, because if I'm a student, I, I want to leave my teacher. I'm going to say what they want to hear. But when I go home to my parent, that's what I'm going to tell my real feelings to. So you don't need to talk to parents or students as well.
We can, yeah. We will serve the parents as well.
Teachers, teachers have their own feelings when they go home at night as well.
Exactly.
Um, I'm, I'm on the fence right now. I met with this, this colleague the other day, spoke to her about taking my sixth grader, my eighth grader out. You talk about, is it health harmless year? Is it health harmless for data? It's not health harmless for these kids.
Right.
They, you can't be, after they take this test, whether they had a bad experience with it, positive or mediocre. That doesn't get deleted next year when they go to take a test. Because if they're normally, you know, they're used to taking MCAS, they're used to the, the procedure, and this year park is being, you know, health harmless. But if a child goes in and takes a third grader, it gets a bit very questioned on question three, because I thought the questions are above grade level. How does that make them feel when they go to take question seven or eight that goes back to third grade, but they're still kind of stuck on question?
Well, I, I think it's all, I think it's all relative, and I, I think.
And how, and how are they going into the following year when, the next year, when they go to take the test, are they feeling, I'm not meaning grade, there's something wrong with me because of the way I should, I should be able to, you know, perform the A level I've been performing. I mean, like, there's school districts, I'm like waiting about grading, and the teachers are upset about this test. It's, it's sad. And we have to listen to what else is happening in other communities.
I think we do, and I just want to ask you a question. Has there been, has there been any kind of memo put out telling parents not to contact the administration? That's what I'm getting at. I, it's great that there are three people here, there are other people that are concerned. Why aren't parents calling?
Because there's no information.
Wait, wait, no, 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 wait, wait, if, if my kid was, something was happening at school that I was upset about, I'd first call the principal, and then I'd call the administrative offices, I didn't, we had forums, nobody showed up.
And there were five or six people here, and Julie was one of them, you know, and so, i- it's good to hear from you, it's, it's valuable for the administration, it's valuable for us to hear this, but you've got to remember, there's hundreds and hundreds of parents out there.
Probably twelve hundred.
Who've all through the same experience.
Right, that's the issue.
And we're not hearing from them.
They're not speaking up, they're not talking about it.
But why aren't, that's, but my point is, we had two forums.
They're still playing their lives.
We had two forums, they didn't show up.
Right.
They were.
Because they don't, because they really don't even know what PARC stands for yet.
What's that?
But, but you're, you're worried, you're worried.
No, we had seventy people and she didn't show up.
Right, right, exactly, and then when we have, yeah, because everyone just show up and say, PARC is terrible, vote for MCAS, but then when we implement PARC, and we have our assistant superintendent here to explain what's going on, we get zero, what sense does that mean?
In this business about, you're afraid the child's going, this is a life experience, he's got to, these kids have got to be able to deal with these things as they move through life, I mean, you can't say, there's a comfort zone, and my, my child's comfortable in this MCAS zone, and therefore he can't break out of it, I mean, the same thing happened when technology took over, whoa, you know, and I'm a victim of it, but I mean, I am, but, but I'm saying, you know, your, your son was comfortable printing everything, and all of a sudden these nuts came along with the keyboard and technology, and now you want him to use technology, you, you've got to let them go a little bit, move forward, and let them deal with these types of issues.
I was just going to add, the, the whole, a, a major thrust behind this implementation was for feedback to be gathered, and I think, we're, we're going to be looking for that feedback, we started to, I've had daily conversations with, with Mr. Colleen last week, and with the other three principals, uh, today, to, to see how the test was going, we're going to be soliciting that feedback, that was the point of, of this early adoption, of this early implementation, I should say, with the high school, the teachers, the teachers requested to be a part of the, of the PARC algebra test, because they wanted the feedback so that they could then be a head to shape their curriculum correspondingly, so the, the information has been out there, people are choosing not to, 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 to take advantage of that and view the website or attend forums or read what's been distributed by their principal or by the district administration, that's their choice to make, but that doesn't mean that we're just going to rest on that, we're going to continue to seek that, that, that information, and parents are going to be a key, a key place where we go to get the feedback from, because we know, we're, we're not, we're not sitting here saying we're championing this cause, we're saying, we want to get, we, we thought it was important that North Reading be a district that was going to be a part of shaping what ultimately we believe is coming, whether it is PARC or something else, you know, in a varied form of, of MCAS, whatever that case might be, we thought it was important to be a part of, of shaping that discussion, and I still believe that today, I, I believe that when I was a principal, I believe it now as the superintendent, so if there's, if there's any belief that communication is shut down, or there's not, there's not a, an opportunity for people to contribute to the discussion, that's false.
Well, I do want to add, Julie, I mean, Julie's right, when people got motivated, we had seventy people approximately at that meeting, I received eight to ten emails leading up to that meeting, I can guarantee you, I have not received one email or phone call since that meeting from a parent, that's what puzzles me, if there was such an outcry, and I'm not, I agree with John, and, and I said this at the end room meeting, I'm a fan of Common Core, I'm a fan of what Massachusetts has done with the Common Core, I'm still to be convinced on PARC, and I'm just saying that if, you know, parents need to know that either the five school committee members, or the administration at their school, or the central administration is there to be contacted, I'm not saying that everything you contact us about is, is going to, you know, we're going to say, oh yeah, they're right, we're going to change, but if you don't, and, and the example you used the other day was, um, the changes we were making with kindergarten, we've added another session to make sure, we've added a new payment plan to make it easier to pay, and that was because parents got involved, they actually met with the superintendent.
But, the information that we got from that forum that Julie kind of generated.
Right.
Was very valuable to us, because a lot of what you raised at that time, we addressed in moving forward, so some of the issues that you raised were issues that we took and we tried to, to make provisions for, so, Cliff, go ahead.
Yeah, that's a point I think is very important, and there are some, some, very important things that people, like, who are folks on up to the city, just so that they can have some guidance, because they don't really know what they're doing, and you think they do, and the plan for them, they change, and then they develop, so now we have kids being exposed to it, as far as the kids being exposed to it, they're not being heard a lot, I'm absolutely a hundred percent sure of that, because throughout their life, they're going to be thrown all sorts of screwy stuff, and they're going to have to deal with it, and this is just one of those cases, they're going to get thrown screwy stuff and they have to deal with it, and it will be a life experience for them, they'll learn for it, and next time something similar comes along, then the whole world will be uh, but we're, we're a, you know, pilot testing animal, you know, we're, we're providing information, on up the system, it'll get fixed, or it won't get fixed, and we'll all complain about it, and two years from now, they'll, we'll get different people in the hierarchy, and they'll change it all over again.
And I do want to say, anybody who wants to email me, call me, I'm available, I'll respond to emails, and I, I can't, I can't change it, but the only way for parents to register concern is to contact somebody.
Can I either email or call Mel?
No, serious, I, I'm open to, to hear.
We're very, very fortunate in Massachusetts, we have a popular higher education community.
Very tough.
And as a result, we're kind of being the leader in the process, and if, if our kids can't do something, then nobody else can do it, so, you know, we, I think it's important for us to guide it, I think it's important for you to get people who have curriculum in their kids, get that information spun up, and they can be in the space, and they respond to it, and pass that information along, and then the test results should be out, we'll show something, kids today, they, they handle all kinds of stuff, I, I watch the stuff that they do, the youngest one, they've, we got a little issue with how to do something on, you know, my phones, uh, they'll chime in, and, and it's fixed, and you don't even see the handle, uh, they are very, very sensitive, uh, they'll, they'll deal with all of these problems that we collect.
Did you?
One big point, I don't have an opinion on this test one way or the other, I'm just sort of, one thing I can say, that I had written age stories on this test last year, every time it was discussed, no one was here until the final term.
And we have, we've had the rest of them, many school.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, again, thank you for being, thank you.
Yeah, there'll be more opportunities too for you to share.
I think our parents are busy, I think we have, um, parents have working jobs and they're not reading for everything, and they just think it's, you know, coming, and that's just, you know, it's, just let it flow, but I think more information about if an option on the next generation MCAS test, I think on the next generation MCAS test, it would be fabulous, because like you said, we are a thought, why aren't we controlling?
We, we are, we are.
How can we control PARC?
Our commissioner is the chair of the board of PARC.
I know, that's a common.
We have, locally, locally, we have no control.
Trust me, we've had, we've had just as many people designing MCAS also involved in the PARC design, so we, Massachusetts has been heavily involved in, in the design of this assessment, but again, it's not a done deal, they're going to look at all the data, and they're going to make the best decision, but we want to give feedback so that they do make that.
I, I, I would like to just add to Patrick's point, Patrick and I, last week, attended a, a very interesting forum for, for superintendents across the state, and Commissioner Chester and the new Secretary of Education, James Pizer, were both there and both spoke, and they did nothing, in my mind, to sway me from a belief that they, this is still a decision to be made, it was, there was nothing said there that caused me to, to drive home and think, oh boy, this is a done deal, just, they were very receptive to, to hearing from school districts on beh, on behalf of districts through the superintendents on, when we had districts stood, and they wanted that feedback, and we can only provide that when we hear from, from folks.
Okay, one more brief comment about the end, we can move on.
I just wanted to let you know that, so I'm a data person anyway, I was a database analyst, a systems analyst, so data is my thing, uh, my kids will be taking PARC, because I want the same feedback, just as John said, we're testing a test, and without having them take it, I really don't know what I'm talking about.
That's, that's the key.
Um, I do think that it's good to present a harsh and critical view of things, because after talking about it, especially on Friday, I've decided, you're all too nice, you're all too nice, everyone's like, our kids can't be fine.
I've been accused of that a lot.
Our kids can be fine, cut our budget, we can do it, I'm like, stop it, stop being so nice.
Oh, who's next, not us.
You guys are nice, and you listen to nice messages, I don't know what we're drinking.
I wonder, I think, one thing I want to say, you know, you, I know a lot of parents, you're right, but I think if, if, you know, I don't know if you have time, or people you know have time, and Julie's going to be moving, moving over to this side soon, it's going to be hard for, I mean, get people together, you know, work with Enru, and you can get, you'll find ways to get people motivated to be able to spend, I know it's not easy to spend a lot of time on it, but if you can get enough people, a core group, when Enru first started, it was a tiny core group, and Enru's really been instrumental in getting the new schools in this town and some of the other things, so, I don't know if that helps, but if you find some like-minded people who have an hour a week, you know, and you get together and discuss that, you can help motivate the, you know, a, a big part of the community.
Okay, Dr. Dale, can I ask you to move forward on the educator evaluation topic?
Thank you, and thank you for showing up, and thank you, folks, for the feedback. So educator evaluation, uh, quick update, I'll move quickly through this, this year we have a hundred percent of our educators on the new model system, they're both supervising and primary evaluators, a supervising evaluator, um, some of us, some of them have upwards of thirty teachers this year, um, the supervising evaluator would walk the teacher through the process of the self-assessment and the goal setting, they would conduct many observations, they would provide formative feedback and assessment, which is written, and also summative assessment, so the supervising evaluator does quite a bit of work in this process. Here are some of the numbers, our high school principal has thirty-five people, high school assistant principal twenty, middle school twenty-three, middle school assistant eighteen, batch elder principal twenty-seven, hood principal twenty-two, little principal twenty-two, this does not include paraprofessionals, custodians, secretaries, others that they're evaluating as well, um, so the numbers are, are quite, are quite high, and, and really, to do this well, we're, we're thinking fifteen to twenty or so might be reasonable, so when you're getting up into thirty-five people, um, and, and part of this under, underscores our need to really look at our curriculum leadership model, a lot of districts are able to call on a math, uh, curriculum leader, for example, to, uh, supervise those in the math department, we're not able to do that under our current structure, and so that's kind of underscoring some of our thoughts there. At the district level, the director of PPS has sixteen folks, the elementary coordinator fifteen, secondary sixteen, I have twenty-nine people, uh, the superintendent has eight, so most of the administrators, um, some of my numbers also, uh, the, the digital learning coordinator did have some of the tech folks, and I, when that, when that position, uh, came back to me, I took on some of those folks, but that's, that's quite a large number to try and do effectively and efficiently at five buildings. One of the great things that we did in this district, we adopted focus areas, uh, so the teachers are able to focus on these twelve highlighted areas under each standard, when they're gathering their evidence and when we're observing, uh, a big important stress factor, uh, factor that we stress with our teachers, and possibly stress factor, is that we want them to have really precise evidence and not the wheelbarrow of evidence, this idea that you come in with a binder that's three feet thick, um, is not really the model, we're supposed to be coming up with strategic evidence that tells a story that really, uh, provides information of an educator's proficiency against those highlighted areas of the rubric. Won't dwell, we spent a lot of time on this in the past, but we have a five-step evaluation cycle, starting with a self-assessment, goes into an analysis and a goal setting and a plan development period, followed by the implementation of the plan, you then have a formative assessment or evaluation check-in, this is midway through the year for those on one-year plans, this is at the end of the first year for those on two-year plans, and at the end of the cycle, you have a summative evaluation. There is weight given to some of those standards, so for the teachers on the right-hand side, the curriculum planning and assessment, and the teaching all students, those are standards one and two, those are weighted a little bit more heavily, the family, community engagement and professional culture, in that, in order to have a rating of proficient or above, uh, for overall, the teachers need to have at least proficient or above on curriculum planning and assessment and teaching all students. There are two ratings that are given in Massachusetts, we are looking at the summative rating, exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory, there's a variety of factors that the principal, uh, or the supervising evaluator will decide in order to make that decision, I like to highlight that proficiency is our goal, proficient is the expected rigorous level of performance for educators, is the demanding but attainable level of performance for most educators, there will be educators receiving exemplary, but it's not everyone, and I know we've talked about this quite a bit, that we really want to have, and we do have exemplary educators, but the idea is that this is a system of growth and a system that's built to, to, to identify areas of improvement and to strive toward that, so achieving proficiency is exactly what we're striving for, and then we will have exemplary in some areas, and when you think of proficient, it is defined this way as well-advanced in an art occupation or branch of knowledge, I think that, and you look at some of those synonyms, I think that proficiency is something that we can be very proud of, and if we have, uh, you know, we, we need to look internally in our district, we've done a very good system of calibrating among schools that were rating proficiency, another district might have a different scale, and they're going to have all exemplars, so if, you know, that gets published, the number of proficient versus exemplars, that's not as important as looking at how well our teachers have done it within our district to meet the goals.
The problem is though, it's the word, proficient.
Has a connotation.
Has come to mean mediocre almost over the years, and a lot of those other words are much better than proficient.
It does, and that's why I, yeah, that's why I define it here, but I agree with you, um, it's, it has a certain meaning with MCAS even, that's the bar, proficiency, um, as opposed to really what it means here, um, an important, I like to highlight that uh, uh, one of the major changes with NVAL is with professional teacher status, so in order to attain your professional teacher status at the end of your third year, the educator should achieve ratings of proficient or exemplary on each performance standard and overall, so, when that critical decision is made for professional teacher status, it's not only on the first two standards, but it's actually all of the standards, um, and also overall, um, and so this is very important for our educators that are, that are at that, uh, juncture in their, in their career. So, a, a big piece of the educator evaluation model is what are called the district determined measures, uh, we felt this has been, uh, sort of an, an unwieldy task, and we have been tasked with every teacher needing two measures, and so I'm going to share with you some, what I consider some very good news, that the Department of Education has really listened to the teachers' union, the mass superintendents, uh, group has, has really, uh, shared some survey feedback with the state, and the state has really responded with some, some new ideas, which is excellent, but North Reading, we are in very, very good shape compared with much of the state, our, our educators have responded very well, just about, I'm going to say, full implementation for nearly all of our educators, all of our educators have defined their two measures, some of them are using MCAS or PARC growth measures, some are using, uh, common assessments, such as midterms, finals, or other assessments that have been, uh, been developed, the only areas that we needed to request waivers, if you remember from last June, were some of our areas such as our, um, school guidance counselors and our school psychologists, and those few, uh, folks that are involved in those, that waiver process, have been very deeply involved in some collaborative work, seem collaborative, uh, we have North Reading educators, and I'm involved in it as well, uh, working to develop some model assessments for school psychologists, for guidance counselors, that we're able to take back and pile and share in North Reading, so we're well on our way to having, um, really some meaningful measures, and I think, you'll hear, if you ask the educators, they'll, the first thing they'll say is, the DDM thing is, there's a lot to it, it's, it's, it's a lot of work, it's, but, our, our main thrust here is to have meaningful conversations about growth, and if we can come up with measures that actually, uh, lead to these, uh, very important conversations about how students are growing, basically, are students showing us, uh, that they're growing with the objectives that we set out in our class of what they should know and be able to do, that's really our focus here, so, there's a whole lot of technical pieces in the DDMs that come back into play about how it affects their overall ratings, um, this is where the state has realized that they need to do a few things, so they've already extended the timelines, the first thing they've done now is they've come up with these new pathways, a very quick overview, and I've only had a quick overview, really thirty thousand foot, uh, this was introduced to us at that meeting that John referenced earlier last week, but they've introduced three new pathways, the first one is basically, um, well, there's actually four, one is just keep going on the timeline you're already on, the second one, the blue there is more time, so it's the same approach with our two measures and coming up with a low, moderate, high growth rating for teachers, but more time to do that, giving us an additional year, the second is the green there, which is introducing two student learning goals, so currently all teachers have a professional practice goal and a student learning goal, this would introduce a third SMART goal and a second student learning goal, which would be related directly to the same information that a district determined measure, measures, that growth measure, and then the third, uh, possible pathway is that you would look at the five-step cycle and you would create another standard. and you would create another standard. So you would go back to this five-step cycle here, and you'd actually add another step that involves a reflection piece around growth. So we are, you know, I've shared this already with our NREA subgroup that continuously meets. I think we both see some promise in this, and we definitely will be discussing. All of these pathways need approval from the state level, but I think we will probably be pursuing one of these extensions. I think we all agree that we're in a very good place, but we do need, at the very least, more time to implement this properly. But I think that some of these other options may help to provide some of the clarity around the district-determined measures that's currently a bit, I'll say, I'll say exhausting and overwhelming for our teachers. I think we all agree that a growth conversation is important, but the actual, the processes to get those scores and to turn them into and link them to educator evaluation, and also as Mel said, with any link to a new unproven test is, is, is something we're concerned about. So we like that there's some, some listening going on at the top from the Department of Ed to offer us some new pathways. Another piece of ENVAL that's, that's in effect fully this year is the staff and student feedback. There's a full implementation this year, an expectation that we record feedback. However, it's completely up to the district how we approach this. So we're looking for, number one, we want it to be meaningful. Number two, we're, we're very clear that it's only to inform their self-assessment. This is private and confidential. This is not a survey that is shared with anyone other than the educator or the administrator. So again, the administrators also have to do this. So we're looking for the administrators to model the survey process, and administrators would take, we looked at some of the model surveys that came out from the state. There was nothing that we wanted to fully adopt, but we probably will take some kind of an amended survey and model the process for collecting that survey to the staff and for demonstrating to the staff through modeling how that survey feedback is reflected in our own self-assessment. We will continue with our joint NREA and admin group to design a meaningful approach. So we're thinking about designing something that's very simple, very similar to what a lot of educators are doing already, but that would also meet this criteria. So that's, that's really where we're at. So we're in a good place with this. We're going to move forward, but we want it to be meaningful, and we want it to be private, confidential, and again, not just one more thing. We want it to have real value. Yes? Sure. Not necessarily a survey. One, one option is a survey, another could just be something as simple as, what's the best thing you learned in school this year? You know, something like, you know, and I think teachers do that on a regular basis. Some of them do it every day. They call them exit tickets. On the way out of class, what did you learn? A three, two, one. We want it to be something like that. Not, we don't want something else and something new. And we also, we're very aware, good point too, about the exhaustion, you know, there's no way to survey every student for every teacher they add. So we're going to come up with a model for staff and student feedback that's representative, but not exactly, you know, kids would be spending all day just taking surveys. We're definitely making sure that's not happening. That is in no one's best interest. And just as, with the timelines that are out there, what's highlighted in yellow are written assessments that need to be done. If you think back to those numbers I showed you earlier, where some of our administrators have 35, 25, 27. In February, March, you have to write formative assessments, written evaluations for everyone in a one-year cycle. In May and June, everyone's submitting their evidence. In June, we're writing summative assessments for those in a one-year cycle. We're writing formative assessments for those in year one of a two-year plan and summative assessments for those in two, year two of a two-year plan. Our old model was a four-year plan, and two of those years was more on the educator gathering evidence, and there wasn't anything written or done by the evaluator. In this two-year plan, when you have those numbers, you're, you're either writing a summative or formative for 100% of the teachers in the district. You know, moving forward in spring 2016, there is a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. If you look at the forms we've adopted, there is a box where you can check. If there's no real change in the rating, you don't have to provide a huge narrative. However, I think we believe in a healthy system. You want to give that feedback to teachers. So we need to find a way to make this much more productive by distributing some of this evaluation through the leadership model. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Just comment and addressing the parents regarding Park. This is somewhat similar, somewhat different, because the kids aren't as involved in this, but the kids, I think there's an impact on the kids in this because of all the stuff that the teachers have to do for this. We had a great, in my opinion, a great evaluation system in North Reading for our teachers. A lot of other districts didn't. And because those other districts didn't, the state came in and decided everybody had to change and do it the way the state wants us to do it. And we had very little say on this. So, you know, in terms of your frustration, we see the frustration here because, as Patrick said, we don't have the administrative time to really do all these evaluations.
And there's probably some value to it, but not to us.
No, no, exactly, exactly. We had a-
The time that it's taken for the teachers to-
Right, exactly. That's, right. And that's, that's a concern. And, and the teachers aren't getting paid anymore to, you know, take all this time, and the evaluators aren't getting paid anymore to, right, so, you know, this is one of the issues that I said before, and I said this on Friday. It's too much testing, it means too much preparation, there's too ma, too many changes in the evaluation system and how it works, and it's all going at once. And I just like it to slow down. I'd like them to say, you know, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to reevaluate how many tests the kids are taking. We're going to reevaluate this, you know, it was, one size fits all. If you have a really highly functioning school district, why are they making us change everything that we do? So, you know, it's-
Because they're responsible for all schools.
Right, I know, but, right, but I, I don't have any kids in the district, so I can't, you know, I can't, I can empathize a little bit because I did have kids in the district, but I don't anymore. But I can see the issues when I look at what they're doing to us from this side. And I think, you know, we have to, I mean, we have to be a voice of, as I said, the more parents that get involved, the, the more of an impact we can have in providing feedback to the, to the state.
Sure. I, I will say there are, there are some positives to the system. We like, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot to be said for aligning goals and that piece, and I think that's come a long way. And it, but it is, there is a lot to it, and it is all happening once. And I'll even say, this was a reaction to a federal, a waiver from No Trial Left Behind. And so you had to have a system, and it had to have certain components to it, and they're reauthorizing that. I hope some of the things are considered. You know, if you're a high, you know, a level one, two district, maybe there's some flexibility here with how things are implemented because we've demonstrated that level of success. So thank you.
Patrick, thank you. All right, next on the agenda of the minutes, we have none this week, that's good. Budget update and fiscal 2015, we have none. Staffing. I'm going to ask the superintendent to give us an update again on the finalists for the Director of Personnel Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in your packet, I provided you with a summary of the qualifications of our two finalist candidates that Dr. Daley provided to me as a result of the work of his search committee. So I am pleased to announce that Kristin Burke and Cynthia Conant are the two finalists. And just very briefly, I want to just provide the committee and the public with a brief overview of, of each candidate. Kristin Burke is currently the elementary special education coordinator for the North Reading Public Schools. Prior to her appointment to this administrative position this year, Kristin had worked in North Reading as an evaluation team leader for the elementary schools since the 2012-13 school year. Prior to coming to North Reading, Kristin worked as an evaluation team supervisor in the Lexington Public Schools. She also worked at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and as a second, special education teacher in the Norwood, Ducksbury, and Winchester Public School Districts. She attended Villanova University and earned a Master of Science in Education degree from Simmons College and a certificate of advanced graduate studies from the University of Massachusetts, Boston. Cynthia Conant is currently in her third year as the Assistant Director of Special Education in the Fitchburg Public School District. Her prior experience includes time as a program coordinator in a 45-day diagnostic program for the FLLAC Collaborative and as a guidance counselor for the Ashland Public Schools. Cynthia also has experience working as a case coordinator for the Family Stabilization Program, a residential program clinician at the Dr. Franklin Perkins School, and as a social worker at the Dr. Franklin Perkins School and for the Department of Social Services. She attended St. Michael's College and earned a Master of Education degree from Cambridge College. So the committee did a nice job interviewing the candidates and bringing forward these finalist candidates. Patrick and I are scheduled, as far as next steps, Patrick and I are scheduled to visit the work sites of both candidates, Kristin Burke here in North Reading, and Cynthia, that's, excuse me, that's on March 26th, and Cynthia Conant on April 8th. The original timeline that we had laid out for this position was to have a candidate to recommend to you tonight, actually, but that's obviously not going to happen. It's my hope that I will be bringing a candidate to recommend to you at the April 27th meeting.
John, thank you for that report. I, I have a question. And I went back and forth with the prior superintendent on this as to whether or not this is an appointment that the school committee makes.
It, it is.
Okay, that's my belief. Kathy had a different point of view. That being the case, I'm not necessarily looking for one candidate to come to us as a recommendation. I think my preference, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask the rest of the committee members what they think, is that we would see both candidates and have an opportunity to interview them, similar to what we did with the superintendent's search in the past, et cetera. So I, I don't know how the other committee members feel. I just don't feel like acquiescing our appointment, you know, if in fact it is our appointment. So I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I, I sat in on the last review committee.
Obviously, a recommendation carried great weight.
No, but, no, but what I would say is, even though we didn't get, I, I would, not to disagree with you, Mr. Chair, but I would 100% be comfortable with accepting a recommendation from the committee.
Okay, that's what I want to hear.
Based on the process that I went through and how well those candidates were vetted, which is why we ended up bringing no candidates to the school committee the last time around. Because the, I think the process was so thorough, and Patrick ran it that last time. I think he's also conducting this one. It was so thorough that it was determined that there just wasn't anybody there with the skill set that we needed. And I just, so I feel comfortable-
But I think the distinction here is there are two candidates that are being recommended that apparently do qualify for the position.
Right. I'm just saying I feel comfortable.
Okay, Janine?
Um, I would like to hear both of them. I mean, you know, just, not that your judgment isn't sound. I'm sure it is, but, you know, just, it's nice to know.
Cliff?
Well, I've already sat in on the committee, so I've already-
Thanks for your help.
I will tell you, I did speak to Kathy about the process that she saw it undertaking.
Yes.
It was her belief that one candidate would be brought forward as the recommended candidate from the committee that had, had done the original screening. You know, with the, the spirit of it being that the committee could live with either of the finalists, or any of the finalist candidates in the case, in case it happens to be the two. But I'll certainly defer to the committee's wishes.
Maybe we can have a discussion about it. Just, again, I read the statute as this being a school committee appointment, as opposed to one candidate being brought forward and say, this is the candidate we recommend. But again, I'm not going to make a big deal out of it.
Jay, I'm not opposed to having them each come in. I don't, I'm, I don't support, you know, a 45-minute interview session. What I would say is, each come in, meet them, make a statement, you know, give us all their background, and we can ask a few questions. But I guess I-
And then ask for a recommendation. But I'm just saying, Mel, this is, this, this position is in the same category as that of superintendent and businessman.
We've actually kind of gone back, there was a difference of opinion, right?
That's a difference of opinion, but I, I think the way that the statute was being interpreted by the prior superintendent was not certainly the way I would interpret it. But why don't we just leave it for further discussion? I'll talk to John about it.
Sure. Very good.
All right. Thank you, John. Bits and donations. We have a number of them again tonight, thank God, and, and these are the things that, that keep us, us going. The J. T., Jade Turner Hood Elementary School Parents Association, another donation of $2,632.08 to support the purchase of two color printers and supplies. So I'd ask for a motion to accept with gratitude that donation from the Hood School.
Move with gratitude.
Okay, motion by Cliff and a second by Mel. Any further discussion? Hearing none, also favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries by vote of four to nothing. And again, thank you.
For the last one, this is an example of how ludicrous our spending budgets are at our schools. There's no way that we should have to rely on a parents association to buy printers and supplies. None.
And this is a regular thing at our meetings, and we're receiving these donations. PKS Associates, a donation of $500 to support the Future Business Leaders of America Club at North Reading High School. And again, I'd ask for a motion. John, I don't know if you want to elaborate on any of these.
I would just say on this one, I think Zach did a nice job earlier talking to you about a, a conference that the, the club wishes to attend at Bentley University. They've attended in the past. This donation is going to be used to fund the group to go on that conference.
Excellent. So we need a motion?
Move with second, please.
Motion by Mel, motion, a second by Cliff. Any further discussion? You just did edge out, Janine, but I'll make a stand. Any further discussion? Hearing none, also favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries by vote of four to nothing. North Reading High School Hockey Boosters, who at the last meeting, I believe, we approved a donation from them.
You didn't, for ice, for ice hockey.
Yeah. We have another donation of $585 to support the cost of the University Ice Hockey Game officials. And again, I'd thank the High School Hockey Boosters for their generosity. I'd ask for a motion.
Motion made.
Motion from Janine, second from Cliff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, also favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries by vote of four to nothing. And finally, the North Reading Community Impact Team, donation of books to support the middle school health education curriculum. And I, John, I don't know if you want to elaborate on this, but there are, the books that are being donated are listed.
Yes. Amy Lakhowitz, who is the Youth Services Director and also serves on the board of the Community Impact Team with me, has done this regularly over the years and, and donates these books for use by health education teachers at the middle school. It's a very nice, I've, I've reviewed the texts. It's a nice donation, donation. I hope you accept it with gratitude.
And again, John and I attended a breakfast this morning with the Community Impact Team. They had the Good Neighbor of the Year. And John and Kathy Willis before him, and who else serves from the North Reading School Administration on that?
On the, on the Board of Directors? It's just the superintendents on the board? But then there's the K-12 Action Team, which I'm the chair of that subcommittee.
It's just one more thing our superintendent does in the community that's not directly necessarily related to his school department duties. So again, ask for a motion to accept with gratitude?
I'd like to make a motion to accept this gratitude.
Motion by Janine, second by Cliff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, also favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries by vote of four to nothing.
Amy does a wonderful job.
We have no subcommittee reports this week. We do have a subcommittee schedule though. Tomorrow at 12:30 PM in the superintendent's office, we have an athletic subcommittee meeting. Tomorrow at 5:30 PM in this room, we have a meeting of the Secondary School Building Committee, and again, that's an open meeting. The NORCAM board meets on March 26th at 7:00 PM, and the Finance Planning Team has been moved to this Friday, March 27th at 8:15 AM.
Mr. Chair, on the NORCAM Board of Directors, because of conflicts that I have, mainly with my involvement with Essex County Youth Soccer, I've had to miss, like, the last three meetings. And I don't see that changing. So after this, at the next meeting, I'd like to people, someone I'd skip consideration to, or maybe we want to want-
I'd move to appoint Julie Cox.
Maybe we want to wait till I knew Mel would come by. But if anybody wants to volunteer for that, because I'm just, I'm just not going to be able to do it, and-
I will attempt to, to be a-
Oh, good.
Okay. Can you, all right.
It just, you know, because it's kind of a wrap-up.
We'll need a vote on that one.
Right.
You want to do it right now?
Well, just let him, let him go to the meeting.
Okay, go to the meeting, we'll take a vote on it.
He's not, he's not volunteering to replace me. He's volunteering to go to that meeting.
All right.
I will say that I did get an update from Rob Carbonei too, that with these cameras, they're waiting for, let me see what he told me here. I was wondering why the new cameras weren't being used yet. And he says that they're waiting for the production switcher to be complete. So I'm sure Phil knows what that is, but as soon as that's complete, then they will be able to control the new cameras, and we'll be able to turn on those for our live meeting.
And there's four of them, I believe, right?
Yes.
Two and two.
Right. So that's the next one.
Okay, thank you, Mel.
We also have the workshop.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes. The budget workshop is March 31st in the superintendent's office at 6:00 PM. Okay? And that's a budget workshop. And then on April 6th, and this is an important meeting, it's going to be held in this room. I'd like to see if we can get as many people here as possible, but we're going to have the FY 2016 budget hearing. It's something we do every year. And again, we're willing at that time to take input from the public. We'll present our budget through both John and Michael Omschaw. And, you know, the community's welcome to attend and to give us some feedback.
We have a policy subcommittee meeting on April 2nd.
April 2nd of the policy subcommittee. Future Business, our next meeting, as I said, is April 6th in this room. That's the budget hearing. Then April 13th, we'll be at the Little School for our meeting. And April 27th, we're back here for our regular, I'm sorry, for regular meeting, but that'll be the budget vote as well that night. Depends what it is.
It must have been the, did you go to that?
Yes, Cliff, go ahead.
I, I went to the suburban poll meeting on the 12th. And it was a panel discussion on sustaining vibrant communities throughout the Commonwealth. The panel was Lieutenant Governor Bolito, Senator Karen Spolka, Jamie Elbridge. And they, they talked about a variety of things. Before the meeting, I introduced myself to Lieutenant Governor and told her that instead of the $20 per student that they have proposing, that the number needs to be more like $400 or $500 per student.
Did she give you a check?
And that that was, you know- And that that was, you know, I realize that was quite a lot of money, but they needed to come up with a program to get that up. She took my comment in stride, but the, obviously the problem is that there isn't that kind of money available at the state level. One of the things I've read most recently, I think going Sunday, was a report of the Heartland Institute that did a study of, since the reforms of, what do I want to say, the welfare reform programs of 96, 1996, that they've been studying how different states have responded to that and in the ranking of how policies have been developed to address that. Massachusetts ranks second from the bottom, Missouri is on the bottom, and we're next. And in the ranking of that, both were around 45% ranking. The next one, the number three from the bottom, was at 50 or so. So we're way, way, way behind from the, from the progress that's been made. We're a little better than that, we're about 14th from the bottom. But there is a big problem there that needs to be straightened out, and that's where a great deal of the state's money gets rattled. And I tried to, I have taken the liberty of addressing that, of sending that study to both Senator Carr and to Brad Jones, to highlight to them that that's an issue. And a place where there's probably a fair amount of money left in the state budget that could be leaned out, more reform. One of the things that the Lieutenant Governor said is that we have to stop spending at 8% increase and having revenues increasing at 4%, you can't keep doing that. But we know that in our own budgets here, that you just don't do that. That need to reduce the cost of mass help, that they have already taken some actions on McKinney, McKinney-Vento, the homeless program by designing the program, redesigning the program to try to get, keep folks closer to where they have ties and reduce transportation costs. Because they would, they would displace a homeless family to a hotel, you know, 30, 50 miles away.
And that community becomes responsible.
Yeah, and that just is inappropriate. So they're obviously doing some things to help that. That they've developed a community PAC, a PAC, not their divisional local services, and they're intending to reward good practices. I think that we in this town have a lot of good practices that are to be highlighted. And that she suggested that communities that felt they had those invite her to come and visit. I think that we should do that. I'll bring that up at the Finance Planning Team meeting. Karen Spilker is a former school committee member from Ashland, and she's got a program on Commonwealth Conversations, said, she said send any idea, especially cost-saving ideas, on to, on to her. Seems to be very community-oriented and that she's working hard toward Chapter 70 reform. And so she's backing that. Highlighted, make the, make our voice louder. So we need to get more people making more noise at the state.
A good place to start though is with our own state representative and state senator, you know? And they're both minority leader, Brad in the House and Bruce Tower in the Senate, so...
And it's a hard sled for them, once they get the feedback from us. But, and Jamie Eldridge, again, was pressing Commonwealth Conversations. He believes that we need to think tax side, maybe a progressive tax amendment and reduce tax breaks for the people like the film industry, for example.
Oh, we can't do that. We don't want to drive the film industry out of North Reading, that's for sure.
Look at all the benefits it provides.
And one of the school committee members from Framingham showed a couple of charts that showed that if the state put about eight and a half million dollars into Chapter 70 for communities that are being underfunded, significantly underfunded, it would bring everybody into kind of concert. That, that isn't anywhere near enough. We truly need the half billion dollar input. There's roughly a million kids in school in Massachusetts, it's 950-something thousand. And again, each one of those needs another 450, 500 dollars to make the communities all whole. I also told the Lieutenant Governor that I had proposed a proposal to the former governor early on and that you put another 1% in the sales tax and dedicate it to schools where they're evenly distributed to every child in the Commonwealth. And if they had done that, that would be that 450 or 500,000 that we need. Not that I want any more sales tax, nobody, nobody wants more sales tax on them, but that would be a way. And unfortunately, my idea got sucked up by the last governor and he added a quarter to it and a quarter or a percent to it and then spent it on other places. Didn't work out so well, but that was, the meeting, meeting was attended by about 60 people. It was a good, good session.
Well, thanks for the report, Cliff. Cliff spends an inordinate amount of time attending meetings and going on and getting information and communicating with other districts and elected officials, so thank you for the, for the effort. Anything further from anybody else? Mel?
Something related, on the Mass, Mass Association School Committee's list served today was, there's a state rep in Plymouth, Josh Cutler, and I believe it was a school committee member from Plymouth. Josh Cutler was sending a letter to Chairman Brian Dempsey, House Ways and Means Committee, who's from April.
He is from April.
And I just wanted, it's a quick letter, wanted to read it. It's regarding the Chapter 70 Minimum Aid Increment. It says, Dear Chairman Dempsey, we are ready to request an increase in the minimum aid increment for the Chapter 70 Education Formula for the fiscal year 2016, House Ways and Means Budget. Under the current formula, vast majority of school districts across Massachusetts will receive only a minimum per pupil increase in House One, which was the budget just rolled up by the governor. The minimum aid figure is set at $20 per pupil, a reduction from the fiscal 15 amount of $25 per pupil. Our school districts face rising expenses every year just to maintain existing services. Most of these cost drivers, including energy and healthcare rates, contractual obligations and testing mandates, are beyond the control of local districts. Yet for the 200-plus districts that will receive just a minimum aid increase from House One, and North Reading is one of those, Chapter 70 increases by an average of less than 1%. We respectfully request an increase in the Chapter 70 Minimum Aid Increment to $50 per pupil or an additional increase of 18.12 million for line item over House One, and it goes on. Just so you know, North Reading with the $20 minimum is, would, the town will receive approximately $50,000.
$50,000, that's all it is.
With the $50 minimum, we receive $125,050. So it's not going to solve our problems. The request is that we ask our representatives and Senator to, to pen this similar letter to Chairman Dempsey. I guess it would be, is he a Senator or a rep? He's a rep, right?
Dempsey's a rep.
So it would be Brad Jones. So if it's appropriate, I can contact Brad or John if you want to read it for you.
I mean, I'm happy to do it on behalf of the committee.
Yeah, I think that's probably...
I think there's a consensus to do it.
Yeah, okay, so...
I'm happy to do it.
The sum of that, what do we take in dollars to accomplish that, would be about 50 million.
They say 18 million in this, so...
About 15, 15 million.
You know why it's only 18 million, Cliff? Because there are, more than half the districts are going to get more than that in $20. So that's only for the districts that are going to get the 20 per pupil as we are. We're looking for a minimum of 50. One other thing, and Michael explained it...